Some of the dynamics that we encountered for tonight. And having that been said, being said, we would like to now at this point call to order our Tuesday, April the 18th, 2023 Lynchburg City School Board Board Retreat. And I do want distinguished members of the board to recognize that there are a few items of business that we will need to take care of as well. And so there are formalities to our meeting. And then in a great way, much of what we will do tonight will be a collaborative think tank where we want to not spend all night because we could on any one issue, but to get some collective thought so that we can figure what is the best direction for our school board and division going forward. With that having been said and calling the meeting to order, I would like for us to have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's board retreat that has been featured. Yes, go right here, Dr. Gupta.
I wanted to see if we can move item D to C and then C in place of D. That way we take care of the business. If anybody needs to go, they can go and we spend rest of the time on the retreat.
I have no problem with the proposed adjustment to our agenda. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, so the motion is to move item, which one is it, Dr. Gupta?
G.
C and D.
All right, so D will become the new C and C will be the new D. Any further questions or discussion on the motion that has been seconded, Dr. Brennan?
Mr. McCall, I appreciate Dr. Gupta's sensitivity. I am going to leave at 7 o'clock, so I may miss that second part.
See how insightful he is? All right, very good. All right, here are no further questions or discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, member Ms. Preston. Scoop up, member Mr. Tross. Scoop up, member Dr. Senha. Scoop up, member Dr. Brennan. Scoop up, member Dr. Coleman. Scoop up, member Dr. Carter. Scoop up, member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Day.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Brennan.
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 Yes.[1565.14]
Some of the dynamics that we encountered for tonight. And having that been said, being said, we would like to now at this point call to order our Tuesday, April the 18th, 2023 Lynchburg City School Board Board Retreat. And I do want distinguished members of the board to recognize that there are a few items of business that we will need to take care of as well. And so there are formalities to our meeting. And then in a great way, much of what we will do tonight will be a collaborative think tank where we want to not spend all night because we could on any one issue, but to get some collective thought so that we can figure what is the best direction for our school board and division going forward. With that having been said and calling the meeting to order, I would like for us to have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's board retreat that has been featured. Yes, go right here, Dr. Gupta.
I wanted to see if we can move item D to C and then C in place of D. That way we take care of the business. If anybody needs to go, they can go and we spend rest of the time on the retreat.
I have no problem with the proposed adjustment to our agenda. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, so the motion is to move item, which one is it, Dr. Gupta?
C.
C and D.
All right, so D will become the new C and C will be the new D. Any further questions or discussion on the motion that has been seconded, Dr. Brennan?
Mr. McCall, I appreciate Dr. Gupta's sensitivity. I'm going to leave at seven o'clock, so I may miss that second part.
Well, you see how insightful he is? All right, very good. All right, here we no further questions or discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, member Ms. Preston.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Dr. Day.
Yes.
Scoop up, member Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Dr. Gupta, you're on a roll.
I know, it's my lucky two weeks.
We're going to stand there.
You're done from here.
A pleasure.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I do want to make sure that our public recognizes the fact that we did spend some time with our colleagues who are the governing body for our city and the city council meeting. And that's why we're a little late starting, simply seeking to do what we can do to advocate for Lynchburg City Schools. With that in mind, now we will move to what is now C, School Board Policy Discussion with Item One, Governance Policy Review, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, so the governance work group met on March 24th and we had two quick policies to review. Both were VSBA updates, so this is for first read and discussion. The first one is BDDG, which is the minutes. And the update is the Code of Virginia Legal Reference at the bottom of that, 2.2-3707.2 has been updated. That is the only change in the policy for the minutes. So any questions on that? It's going to be quick and easy.
All right.
The second one is CBG, which is the evaluation for the superintendent. And again, another VSBA update to add House Bill 1904, Senate Bill 1196, and a legal reference. And you can see at the bottom, it talks about the guidelines for superintendent evaluation, which were updated on March 17th, 2022. And since our policy was last revised on August 3rd, 2021, we're bringing this back. It mimics the updated guidelines plus changes. In the middle of the policy, it looks like they took that out of paragraph form and put it in bullet form for student academic progress, overall summative rating, identification of areas of strength, weaknesses, recommendations, and then of course, an evaluation of cultural competency, which is the new part in March 17th, 2022. Questions? Okay, well, that concludes my section.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Edwards. And that was for information. Item two is the CNI Policy Review. And Dr. Edwards and Dr. Sam Coleman.
Yes, Mrs. Pugh is not with us today, but I do have Dr. Coleman, who is sitting in for the CNI Policy Review. And again, similar to policies I just went over, some of these are VSBA updates. And then you'll see a section that is for three-year review, which just means there may not be any changes, but we just like to have eyes on them every three years to make sure that's still what the board wants to say in those areas. So, Dr. Coleman, you want to go over the VSBA updates?
All right, so we can start with the policy around our acceptable use. And these are just minor language changes within the policy around our acceptable use. And then just some minor cross-reference updates, which you see featured at the bottom. I guess we have the discussion around this. I don't know that there was anything, any?
It's pretty standard.
It's pretty straightforward.
All right, so that'll move us to C3.
Wait, no, we're not. They move us to school libraries. We're really getting happy there now. Well, we can possibly go there a little quicker.
School libraries, again, very minor updates. This policy just includes language about the requirement for each school to have a library. In some of our schools, we call them library media centers. But again, pretty straightforward with minor updates. Just give them all, if you take a look at that to see if there's anything in particular you'd want to have discussion around. But again, pretty straightforward.
And remember, VSBA is going through and removing the word "shall" out of a lot of their policies. All right.
Do we, I wonder if we could do this more efficiently just by asking if anyone has any aspect of any of these that they want to talk about rather than going through them one at a time?
How you think, Dr. Day?
Although I'm wondering if maybe for the viewing audience, it's just important to kind of identify, these are the policies we're looking at.
Okay, all right, that's a valid point.
Good point.
Dr. Day, we can proceed with your logic with the proper identification.
Well, we'll proceed a little faster then.
All right, and then the only other one that would have a VSBA update with the new code is the College and Career Readiness Policy, IJD, around our career and college and career readiness. So give you a moment to take a look at that.
And for the viewing audience, they just updated the new Code of Virginia, that's all, on that policy. So it is essentially the same. Okay, quiet, moving on, moving it faster.
All right.
LI, which is the Relations with Educational Accreditation Agencies. And this one, VSBA took out Virginia Index of Performance and put in Exemplar School Recognition Program. A lot of our accreditation, you know, is done through VDOE and on the standards of quality and a school quality profile. You can find that as well. So there's some updates for standards for accreditation in the middle as well. All right, keep it going.
Going right along. Next one is IGAD for our Career and Technical Education. This is again, three-year review. We had an opportunity to review this with our Career and Technical Education Supervisor with no recommendations for changes.
All right, next one, Dr. Coleman.
All right, same thing, just our policy around notification of our learning objectives. We did not propose any changes or suggested updates to that.
All right, and hearing none.
All right, and last but not least, our policy around SOL retakes, Policy IKH. Again, this is just for a three-year review. There were no changes recommended, but are there any questions or?
Sort of break the silence just for a minute. And this is, Dr. Coleman, more a philosophical question than a logistical. But so this policy states that students in kindergarten through grade eight are not required to retake Virginia Assessment Program tests unless they're retained in grade and have not previously passed related tests or were otherwise permitted by Board of Education. Students in high school are required to retake it and of course, SOL tests are determined by the Board of Education. And a teacher was talking recently about the fact that, so a student can not pass the SOLs prior to high school and the implication is it's not that big a deal, that they can keep moving on. Whereas when you get to high school, it is a big deal that you have to pass the SOLs. Is that state law that has it so that you don't have to pass the SOLs? Because other issue is that you're not passing SOLs, you may not be meeting the standards of education, but you're still moving on to another grade. Can you help us with that as far as the perspective on that?
Sure, I don't think it's state law, but I think the implications for here is around earning credit for the course. And so I think that factors in for high school if a student does not pass the course, so they're not earning a verified credit for that course. I think that's where the difference is, whereas in middle school and certainly elementary school, a student could not pass the class and then move forward to the next courses. So there isn't that factor around earning verified credit because they sat for the SOL.
Is it state law that students do not have to pass the SOLs in elementary, middle school, and then in high school they do have to pass? Is that the?
That's the verified credit that is state, like you have to have so many verified credits in order to get your diploma if you want to get the standard. High school, if you want to get the standard diploma or the advanced diploma, obviously you need a little bit more with that. But it is at the high school level and you need verified credits in certain subjects. So you can't just say, well, I have five, but they have to be in the certain subjects.
Great, thank you very much.
And it's just a follow-up to that. It gets back to one of my concerns is are we pushing children through to onto the next grade that don't have the foundation, the skill set to succeed in next grade? And I mean, this policy seems to me to basically facilitate that push through to the next grade even though they haven't passed the SOLs. And supposedly the SOLs are some kind of gauge as to whether or not they have the fundamental skills for that particular grade. Is there, am I the only, is there a concern with that? And is there a way that we can address it? So I guess there's two parts.
That was my question. So just to check my understanding, a student can eighth grade or below fail the SOL but still advance to the next grade?
Yes.
Yes.
So to me, that seems like a disconnect because isn't the SOL kind of the minimum competency in an area? And so?
It's one, the SOL is not the end-all and be-all that decides a student's, I guess, total career in that year. So in the grades eight and under, we'll just say, or even three to eight, because SOLs aren't given in grade two, we have PALS assessment and lower grades and different assessments. They're used as a measure of here are the things that should trigger a, this is what kids are struggling with, here is an area for pre-teaching, reteaching, and those types of things and exposure. It may show here are some areas in your curriculum that you, we might not even be teaching. We may be, and I don't think that's the case with our curriculum, but I know when you're looking at test scores generally in grades K to eight, it's more for information because when you get to high school, this matters. So, and that was part and parcel to the history of adding more tests as we went along because it used to just be in high school that we tested. Then we started doing three grades and then more grades so that you would have more of that information. We do not retain kids if their sole measure is they failed the, they didn't score the recommended points on the SOL. And here's something else that we need to consider. If I am in, let's say, fourth grade, I start fourth grade at a pre-premier kindergarten reading level and then I move up to third grade reading, man, did I do some progress in my fourth grade year if I went from kindergarten to third, but I didn't pass the fourth grade test, but I made some progress. So that's why it's one measure and we got to look at the kids in totality.
I think in elementary, it's kind of a building block kind of thing. Because when you get to middle school and high school, you're taking an independent course that has, doesn't necessarily have any relevance to something else that you can do or should do or have learned. Reading, for example, is something that you're building on, as you were saying a moment ago, is something that you're building on continually. So even though you couldn't read well in first grade, like you said, you can take off and really be able to read well in second or third grade. And the teachers that you are encountering are going to be building on the skill set that you have, if that's making any sense at all to anybody. So it's not, it's almost like it's a separate kind of teaching that takes place in elementary versus what takes place in middle school.
So presumably, because that happens at the end of the school year when the current teacher cannot act on those scores, correct?
Well, remember, we moved to three assessments for SOLs now. So there's a fall, there's a winter, and there's a spring. And remember, we gave you growth numbers that none of us really knew what they meant because the state has not gone and back benchmark what those growth assessments mean. So I think as we go forward, that fall to spring, spring to, spring to spring, I think is what I heard even today on one of my calls, will be a better measure of looking at student growth.
So when I'm a teacher and it's the first day of school and I have my student roster, I know I have that information on how they did on their SOL prior year from those different points. And so I have the information I need to know from day one where, what each student's individual needs are and I can work from there.
And it breaks it down. You've seen some of what Chuck has presented in terms of questions and strands and areas. And when you combine that with other measures, like if you're looking at it from grades three, three to eight, and you're looking at iExcel, and then you start to see the patterns of, then it helps you build a good student learning plan for here are some areas that we either need to fill up as we're moving you along. Because you don't want to just hold a kid back because they can't tie their shoe, right? So just because I can't tie my shoe doesn't mean I can't run at amazing speeds. I can run at amazing speeds, I need help learning how to tie my shoe. So as we move forward, that's some of the work that we're doing with that. Thank you.
Dr. Day?
The language in this policy says students are not required to retake Virginia Assessment Program tests unless they are retained in grade and have not previously passed the tests. So I don't want to open up a new can of worms here, but I have had a conversation with Sam and Amy about our policies about retention in grade. And what gave rise to that conversation is just some of the cases I observed in discipline committees where our students obviously did pass one grade to the next and yet seemed to not satisfy our requirements for passing ahead in the grade. Like I say, I don't want to open a new can of worms here, but I think this policy needs to be considered in conjunction with the discussion of our passing from one grade to the next and what are our criteria for that. So I might suggest that we, we either, there's no change being proposed to this policy. So I would suggest we leave it as is, but with an understanding that if in the future we do come back and have a discussion about passing, our criteria for passing from one grade to the next, we look at this policy again as part of that discussion.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense, but this policy is solely about retaking the test.
Right, yeah.
And so it's not, like this is valuable conversation to consider about our practices and guidance that we use to set parameters for retention. This is talking about something different. And in this case, if a student is taking an SOL test in eighth grade, because they would be in eighth grade again if they were retained, then they would retake it in that sense. That's what that clause is stating.
And just for the board's knowledge, and those of you who are veteran board members, you know this, that whenever we do bring policies, like if we get a new VSBA policy and there's a companion that's like, ooh, this might be affected even if we just approved it, we did that one time, we had policies we approved like just last month, let's bring it back again, bring it back again. So at any time, you're not limited, like we just did the three-year review, we can't look at it again. No, you don't have to wait three years, you can always bring something back again.
I would then move that we dispense with the second reading and tonight approve all of these policies as presented here.
I would second that, yes.
Well, it has been moved and there's a second to dispatch of the Fed Policies, CNI, tonight. And if I hear some objection, then we can have a discussion. Since I hear no objection and the motion is on the floor, does anyone want to say anything? You right here, Dr. Gupta?
Are you taking all the policies or just the?
Just CNI. Oh, all of them?
No, what we just discussed right here.
I assumed it was all of them, but.
Yeah. Clarify your motion.
My motion was for the policies under Part Two of what has been changed to Item C on the agenda. C, Part Two, all six CNI policies on the table here.
That is what I was under the impression that.
About the governance policy?
He has clarified the motion. Are you still seconding that clarified motion?
No, I'm not talking about the governance policy. Yeah, just these.
He's talking about the C2, CNI policy.
The six that are together in this chart under Item Two, CNI Policy Review.
What's keeping governance policy?
Where's the governance policy?
The one item number one.
It was the first read, they were not first read. I thought they were C.
Oh, I see. So why not include those? Well, you should amend my motion then.
You just amend your motion, that'll be the easiest thing.
Okay, can I amend my own motion?
I'm going to allow you to tonight.
Okay. I would like to amend my motion so that it includes the governance policies, BDDG and CBG as well.
Let me ask this, are you, go ahead, is there a second?
I was second.
All right, Dr. Senha, I was second. Is that to suggest that what we're going to do under C3 is not to be under that same consideration or should we?
I have not included C3 in my motion.
Do you want to perceive as followed and have to do it again or leave?
We'll do it again, let's vote.
All right, is there any further questions on the motion to?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll let you finish in my discussion.
All I was stating, restating the motion, which is C2, all six items.
And the only reason I brought up with respect to the SO-
And the only reason I brought up with respect to the, the SOL policy, and I understand your comment, is I do think, my, my big focus is on closing the achievement gap, and I really think if we're passing kids that don't have fundamental skill set, and the only barometer that I have, or one of the only ones I have, is their SOL test, and they're not doing well in the SOA test, that's a flag to me, and it may be bitter medicine to take, but at some point, we need to take that bitter medicine for the long-term future of these children. And I get the, the, you know, the books and articles about self-esteem and holding child back, but I, I really am concerned about long-term, if these kids don't have the fundamental building blocks, and we're passing them, and I don't want them to fall through the cracks, and I just think that's happening some in our school system. Go ahead.
I agree with you. During the retreat agenda, I have a
Okay, perfect.
Proposal to go for it, Lowe's, to buy a new thermometer or barometer, you suggested?
New barometer, okay, perfect. All right.
All right, but your point is very well taken, turn it around. Dr. Day?
So, to respond to your concern, I too share your concern. My suggestion is that we address it by coming back in the future and talking about our criteria for passing to the next grade.
Only was using it as a springboard to talk about it. Yeah, I agree, the policy's fine.
And there is a motion on the floor to amend my original motion. Am I not correct?
That's correct, which would be to include one and two, that's correct.
To include one and two.
Yes, so, at this point, if there are no further questions, you're now voting that you're going to ultimately vote on a main motion to approve C1 and C2 together, and then we will go to C3 independently. All right, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter? Coleman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Now, we will vote on the main motion, which is to approve C1 and C2 as presented tonight. If there are no further questions or discussion, we are now, the first vote was for the amendment to include one, since Dr. Gupta wanted to do C1. Got it? So now we're voting on the main motion. All right, no further questions on it. Madam Clerk, please call a roll. You're now voting on the main motion as amended to include C1 and C2.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, I hope I'm not being premature, now we're going to move to C3, is that right?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
So C3 is actually, the policy is there, but you're not voting on the policy. We're actually looking at the MOU. But I put the policy there because the policy states that every two years, we have to revisit the MOU. And then in the MOU, you have a draft of all of the suggested corrections that came from you, that came from community when we put the survey out. We also sent it over to Chief Zudema, and let his folks take a peek at it. So it is the first read of, we had it on the agenda before, but we didn't, we didn't entertain questions or anything like that. So that is what this is, I just wanted to clarify that, and then I can turn it over to Dr. Wode, to kind of go over that. And I also want to dismiss Dr. Coleman, who probably has some instruction work that he can get to. So thank you for subbing for Amy.
And I want to just say, as he leaves, Dr. Coleman, thank you for the great work that you are doing, and your team, it's just an amazing impact, and you're often quoted all over the place, and sometimes they think it's me, so I'm happy about that.
Good evening, members of the board.
That's funny. Well, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, members of the board. As Dr. Edwards said, the majority of the changes that are in the document are related mostly just to wording changes, or some logistical changes, just to be more effective of the way that we do operate. And again, this is in consultation with Chief Zudema, as we continue our very longstanding, great relationship with the police department. Lynchburg City Schools has a, has a wonderful SRO program, and just for the public, to remind you, this is our School Resource Officer Program, which is our police officers that are in schools, as opposed to our school security officers, our SSO program, which are, and are starting to become more in our elementary schools. So this is the longstanding School Resource Officer Program that we have had in the school division for some time, and we review the agreement once every two years. Again, the majority of the changes are largely wording changes that are sort of minor. We did have a larger change, or an addition, that relates to the use of Canon units in the building, that reflects our conversations with the police department, and the need to address issues of drugs and drug paraphernalia and weapons and that sort of thing. But also make sure that we're not, we're being very clear on how Canons will not be interacting with individual people or students. So we'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, and I see your hand, Dr. Gupta. I do know that over the years, this has created some level of discussion, and we thank you, Madam Superintendent, for allowing us as a board to weigh in, we know ultimately it's your signature and the chief's, and so, Dr. Gupta, please.
No, the wording in, for assignment of SROs is collaboration, and I'm going to use a hypothetical example. If the LPD chief wants to take out the EC glass SRO for patrol duty and replace with something else, do we have the say in that process? Because some of these SROs are sort of the pillars of those buildings, have been there for years, and, and I don't want that to be disturbed. So is there something in this agreement where we have their word, that they'll not be switches willy-nilly, taking people out?
So, you know, we, it's a great question, and, and certainly, I think it reflects...
EC glass was a hypothetical question.
Yeah, so, but I think it reflects the great role that police, the SROs do play in the building in many cases. So the way we've written this is, is really trying to make sure that we recognize that there is a need to balance both those sort of long-term school relationships, with also the needs of the police department, but also the needs of that SRO. You know, it's really, it's great to spend time and a number of years in, in a building, but it's also really important to have experience outside of the, of the school and on the road, and doing different things that may be necessary. So, you know, I think we, we do have a great, you know, sort of collaborative relationship. I certainly wouldn't want to be in a position to veto a, a police chief's assignment of his personnel, just like, I don't think we'd want the police chief to veto any of our assignments of personnel. But I do think that, we do have that conversation, and, and as people have changed, we've had that conversation.
If veto is too harsh, it's like my way or highway. I'm using the word collaboration, it says, we conduct it through a collaborative process between LPD and LCS. So I'm assuming...
I would say that that, that is true, right? And, and any time when they've been either reassigned, or temporarily displaced to a different duty, Chief Zudema always calls me, we have a conversation, he explains the why behind the decision, and, and the rationale with it. So it's not willy-nilly, not, not just random, or just, you know, none of that. And we do have a discussion about it, but, you know, ultimately, the assignment of personnel on the police side is his responsibility, but he always gives us consideration, conversation, and discussion. And he doesn't, he doesn't do it without an explanation of, you know, sometimes what's going on in the community, and maybe even a need for a certain skill set for, that our SRO has, that he might need in the community for that reason.
And I think that's the critical thing about the two, every two-year review of this, if it, well, there might be some, people have been moved around, that maybe people don't like or don't like. Generally speaking, we, we think this process works really well, but I think if we find in the future that it's not working, we, we would then maybe address that in the language in the room.
Because with the discipline issues rising, or on the rise in our school system, especially at high group, high school level, if some of these SROs have those critical relationships at a very micro level.
Absolutely.
You know, and that helps de-escalate some of those situations. And so those relationships come handy in those situations.
I think the goal is in the training, and making sure that we have kid-friendly SROs, and that's not to say they let kids get away with things, but they just understand the nature of our children, and how to engage. And, and just remember, like, when it comes to discipline, that is an administrative function in our teachers, not necessarily the SRO function. However, to your point, they do serve as role models, developing positive relationships with young people, and they're very present, and they're very involvement, you know, whether they're helping out at an event, or just, you know, coming to a classroom and commenting, and being a panelist judge, or things like that, has a positive impact on our students.
If I can make one more point, too, I think that there is an importance of changing between in school and on, on the road, and particularly because if you think about students who maybe graduate from us, and are in the community, it's really good to have people, police officers on the road that have been in the schools, that have relationships down the road, that, that is a, is a good opportunity for them to continue on those relationships down the road. So, so we think it's good, there, there is definitely tremendous value in spending a considerable amount of time, you know, one or, one or two years is not enough, but there is value in that balance as well.
Okay, Dr. Carter, then, Dr. Day?
I'll try to get these, well, I'm not going to worry about the order, but in one, page one of thirteen, in the third paragraph, it says, "In partnership, LCS will carry out application of school rules, and LCS policy, while SROs will carry out the application, and each would differentiate, differentiate between disciplinary issues." And I would like to change that to suspected or potential criminal activity. But my question is, what does it look like if there is a disagreement, or differentiates, differentiations of the, the views don't match up, as to which one is application of school policy versus potential suspected criminal activity?
Well, I think they have very defined roles of what is criminal activity. The, the, we, you know, and the discipline, our, our purview's a little bit wider, right? And what we can do, and how we can talk to our children, and bring them in, and engage in a conversation, and, hey, what's going on, they don't have that same lens with, in the criminal activity realm. We will typically defer to them if it is criminal activity, but in cases where, and we've had conversations about this, where, you know, we consider lockdowns and safety, and things like that, where there's a joint responsibility, we've increased and enhanced our communication, so that we have a say in terms of, yes, you have your protocol in terms of safety for lockdown, but we have our protocols in terms of safety for students as well.
The other one is on page two, evaluation of school law enforcement partnership. Is this what we consider the evaluation? It says measurable objectives in the MOU will be developed.
That, the objectives are not in here, in that. We typically get a report from sergeant that has information in there regarding each SRO, and actually, I would say, the partnership between the SROs and schools. It speaks to training, it speaks to activities, I'm going off the old ones, I know you, you get them now, so you might want to just talk a little bit about that. And then building principals typically meet with SROs to, to go over things that are pertinent in their building, so each one is a little bit different.
So are we ever see, given those measurements, or what are they? Measurable objectives?
Sure, so, I don't, I, in my time here, we haven't given that, but we certainly could do that, you know, at a presentation in the future. It's a great, it's a great idea.
I think we, yeah, we need to, and also, D6, D, six, D, six of thirteen, it talks about what will happen to a student, if the SRO does find something. Six D, the student response to...
Six, page number?
Page six of thirteen.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, response to student violations of the law, is that the part, paragraph?
Yes. My concern is, I've been to some disciplinary committee, some meetings, too many. I don't know whether the application is applied. So my question is, how do they decide, use their discretion to determine whether law enforcement's actions are appropriate? Sometimes I see students maybe with a small quantity of whatever, and they are taken away to the detention center. And in another case I've seen where a student had a huge amount, and they were allowed to go home with their parents. So my question is, how is that decided? And I just want to make sure that it's consistently, consistent as to how it's handled.
I'm sorry, can you show, point me to where in the paragraph?
I don't have that one down. Consistency with application is what I'd put.
Is that in D, you're saying?
You're on page six, section D.
Yeah, section D.
So, so you're not saying...
Second paragraph in section D on page six, where it says, "The SRO shall use their discretion in determining whether law enforcement actions are appropriate."
I just wanted to, is that, I want to, we'll make sure that we apply that consistently.
So I think the intent of the paragraph is more on the, on the side of not in, not always going first to charging the student. I think that's, that's the, the, as I read that, that's sort of the spirit of that language. But, you know, I, I don't know that we know necessarily what goes into those factors, because that's sort of a independent conversation with the, maybe the Commonwealth attorney, and other, maybe police officer supervisors. And I don't know that we're necessarily involved in the conversation of why, and who is charged with what, and what might be differently, I'm not sure.
Well, and I'm not talking about the charges, sometimes just from the schools, some are allowed, their parents are called in, and they're allowed to go home. Others, they are handcuffed and taken away, and they don't go home, or they don't, they're not released to their parents. So I'm, my question is, how is that decided? Which child gets, you know?
I think we'd have to look at the, like, if I'm cooperative, or whatever the case may be, then I might be the one that's like, your parents are coming to get you, but if I get unruly, and start to become more of a, there may be, so I think it, to your question, I would like to actually look at the incidents, to see the, and, and do a disparity check, to see if that, if, what's going on in, in those situations, because it's hard for us to guess.
Well, and then I have particulars, but you can't, because it may, it's too, it probably is not enough, but sometimes students are caught with a little bit, and they are handcuffed and taken away. Another case I've seen where a student was, had a significant amount, and it was a very detailed operation, and really, the student just needed to go to, it would've been a great thing if it was a positive manner, it was really detailed, really organized, and they were released
Sure.
To their parent, and didn't, wasn't handcuffed or taken away.
Sure. So, so maybe if I may, Dr. Carter, maybe what, what you're challenging us to consider is, is to take a look at when those incident, incidents have occurred, look for any factors that may be themes and trends, and, and come back to you and see where that looks like.
I'd love to see that, yeah.
I, I did, because I don't know that I can necessarily answer that on a case-by-case basis, but I think if we look at all those cases that were, you know, the course of a year, or something like that, that might, might give us some trends.
But are, do we know whether or not there are certain criteria, that this, this line has been crossed, so this student is able to go home, or hasn't been crossed, it's not so much disruptive, but with quantities of drugs, or paraphernalia, or anything versus, if it's below this amount, the child can go home, or the student can go home, versus...
So I, I don't know that we know that. My, my experience with juvenile justice is that there is a, there's a, it's a big sort of look on the overall picture of the child, and what experiences they may have had before with, with the juvenile justice system, their relationship with the J and D R Court, and what, what's gone on there. I, I don't know that we know necessarily what, in that individual moment, when that decision is made.
Is, is that a question that it would be, it would be smart to ask the, the police department, the SROs, to give us an answer to?
Sure.
Because they're going to be privy to information that we're not necessarily going to be privy to. Maybe there's another investigation going on, maybe they've been found guilty of something or involved with something that we don't know anything about. But if they could at least give us some generals, without being terribly specific, because that's jeopardizing some other legal things, but at least they could give you some answers. We're making a decision based on other information that we have, or something like that. So it kind of gives us an idea of, you know, why it's being handled differently. Would that, would that help?
Yes, I think so.
But we could definitely do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Two more.
You have two more, everybody is.
The second sentence, if I can get an explanation of this, nine of thirteen, and under E, the second sentence, S R I.
What page is it?
Nine of thirteen, page nine. Under E, "The SRO may disclose only law enforcement records created and maintained by the SRO for the purpose of ensuring the safety, physical safety, and security of people and property." In the next... In the next sentence was, SRO shall make official, what does all that mean?
Sure, so the first sentence, and this is something that we use actually quite frequently, is oftentimes when there is, there's an incident in the community, we, police department will call us and say, hey, this has gone on with these two people, we may or may not, we may or may not charge somebody, but we, there's been an incident in the community, you need to look for Anthony and make sure just everything stays okay. That's, that's kind of the big thing we do and we use that all the time just to make sure that everybody's staying safe and everybody's in good shape. Second.
Well, that, I think that will take care of that. That's good. And the K nine officers, will they have, be trained and supervised so that, that they're more, that they're not, don't have a propensity for aggression or they're child friendly or student friendly versus?
Yeah, absolutely, so, so first we will not be around the way that's written, around or with persons. So they will just be with their handler, so they will not be, you know, searching on their person. And then they will be supervised by the SROs in the building.
And last thing is what warrants a scan versus a search? Do we know?
So I think they, they changed the language from search to scan, and I think that is a legal distinction as like sort of running the dog through a room as opposed to taking a bag and searching it through.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, Dr. Day.
Yeah, well, first I want to follow up on a couple of things that Sharon talked about. And, you know, you were raising the issue of what I would call consistency of how a student particularly found in possession of drugs is handled. And one of the main themes of this whole agreement is that law enforcement is the police department's business, not ours. And so if they're, that every police officer, when they encounter a suspect, they have to exercise their own judgment about when am I going to handcuff this person, take them in? When am I going to give them a warning? When do I need to investigate further? And so I think we have to recognize that it's the police officer who has to make that call. We could be concerned about if we perceive there's been some inconsistency. But again, that aspect of it is the police department's responsibility, not ours. Now, it does sometimes intersect with our disciplinary issues, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that we have that in mind. That another thing that Sharon talked about was, this is on pages two and three, about when the SRO has to be pulled away from their assigned school for some other police department duties. And the point I was going to make is that is in two separate paragraphs here. There's a paragraph, the first full paragraph on the top of page three, as well as the second paragraph under A. And it seems to me they're, they ought to be in the same paragraph because they're saying very much the same thing.
Sure.
And I'm always sort of disturbed when I find a policy when half the policy's here, half the policy's there. It's easy for someone looking for, what does the policy say, to miss part of it. So I think that's an editing suggestion. Another thing that, as I reviewed this, I noticed a couple of places where it was a little bit, I wanted to be sure our wording was not implying, like, I'm looking at the very, in the preamble, the very last sentence, students should receive appropriate redirection and support from in-school and community resources, providing students the opportunity to avoid behaviors that lead to suspension, expulsion and so forth. And language like that appears in a couple of places. And I want to be sure that we're not saying we want the schools to shield students from the legal consequences of their actions. What we want is to correct, redirect their behavior so they don't end up engaged with legal consequences. There were a couple of, and I don't think that sentence crosses the boundary for me, but every time I read a sentence like that, I've, a yellow flag goes up in my head, so let's be careful here that we're not protecting students from the, from the legal system. That's not our role. That's the legal system's role to decide how they handle juveniles. I was going then to ask this, what is the status of this document? Are we, is this like a first reading, a second reading?
It's the first reading.
First reading, okay. So, let's see, I have a number of notes here. I thought that was a fire alarm. The paragraph at the top of page two, to promote positive and supportive school climate, the partnership will collaborate to increase law-related education. So what does that mean?
Sure, so from, from time to time, the SROs particularly, well, both at the high schools and middle schools, will do presentations and classes. They'll talk to students about.
Arctics laws, firearm laws, things like that. Okay. Okay. And then the next paragraph, the second, is a place where my yellow flag went up, the end of the sentence where it says, and avoid student involvement with juvenile criminal justice systems. That sounded to me like a little bit like we're trying to hide them from the police. And I don't think that's the intent. I just would suggest maybe we insert the phrase, avoid, comma, if possible, the need for student involvement with juvenile justice systems, to make it a little bit clear that we're, we're not trying to come between, involve ourselves in a legitimate function of the police. Top of page five, this is under the, paragraph three, school principal responsibilities. Says the school administration ensures a written procedure in accordance with guidelines established by the board. I guess. My question is, where is that written procedure?
I'm sorry, can you help me?
Okay. Paragraph that starts at the bottom of page four and continues onto the top of page five. The first line on page five refers to a written procedure. And I'm asking, where is that written procedure? It's, we're, we're trying to refer to a specific written procedure that describes the guidelines that are being discussed here. And so I want to know where is that written procedure, if somebody wants to consult it?
So might ask for Dr. Edward's help on this, but I'm, it's, looks like it's, so very similar to K N A J, the, the policy that's in, in the, the board docs, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
Well, then maybe it ought to be specific about that.
Sure.
If that's what it's referring to, it ought to be specific.
Okay.
So somebody who's looking at this and wants to know exactly what is that written procedure, they know where to go.
So per policy.
Yeah.
Per policy.
And then also on page five, item four, section A, very last line, or very last sentence, SROs are expected to collaborate with school administrators and other personnel to support positive school climates that focus on resolving conflicts, reducing student engagement with the juvenile and criminal justice systems. And the sentence continues, and diverting youth from courts when possible. I would suggest ending the sentence after systems and removing that last phrase. It's somewhat redundant. And again, it sounds like we're trying to insert ourselves in the justice system by keeping students out of the courts who legally ought to be in the courts.
Sure, so, but this is certainly your document, I think there is a difference in that paragraph, in that because in, in a juvenile justice system, there are lots of actions that occur in diversion before you get to court. So just next door to us with the J and D R folks, there, there's, we try oftentimes mentoring and those sorts of things that occur before, lots of, lots of different things will occur hopefully before we get to court. And that's in relationship with the folks that are supervising those, those functions. And so I think the reason those are there are because, and not necessarily in Lynchburg in all cases, but there has been a long history of, called a school to prison pipeline, right? Where, where things have happened in school and people have been overcharged. And so I think the intent is to say, just like the rest of the juvenile justice system, here's where we're supposed to be functioning. And we want to make sure that we are being consistent with the vision of that function.
So you're saying that the phrase I was suggesting we remove is actually saying something different than what precedes it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, well, then maybe, I'll, I'll see if I can think of a different wording. I don't like the diverting.
Yeah.
Maybe a different word there would.
That's certainly up to you, I mean, I think that is, that is a, that is an intent of the J and D R system though. We do, we do, and I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but they, we do try to divert from court.
Since this is a first reading, there's time for me to ponder it and maybe send you.
All right, we're going to, Dr. if you could continue on to your next point.
The same language occurs on the next page. At the end of the first paragraph under D. And divert students from the courts when appropriate, that's the same language that I'm a little uncomfortable with. Let's see if I have anything else.
So you're kind of saying so that the students do not become involved with the juvenile justice system or something like that?
To express that, we want to prevent the need for the court system rather than somehow, somehow protect them from it. In other words, if they've committed something that they, that legitimately puts them in the criminal justice system, we shouldn't be looking for a way to remove them from that. We should keep them from doing that act in the first place.
But, but it says if we reduce student engagement so that they don't become involved with.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, that's, that's, I want the language to make that clear.
And maybe we could talk about that.
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Carter, did you want to respond to any statements said earlier?
Regarding, I know the law enforcement, the law, police officers perform their functions. I just want to make sure that this MOU states clearly that we want it to be consistently performed. Not so much what they do and how they do it, but some of the actions. If a student is caught with a certain amount, and this means, this is the way we have to go, then it should be consistently done for all students that way.
Are you talking about our decisions or the police department's decision?
Police department. If there is a law or statute that if you have this much, then this is what happens, then consistently, that should be what happens.
Well, any amount is illegal.
Well, but then there's different guidelines, so I don't know how that is.
Point is well taken, Dr. Carter has, we'll go. Dr. Gupta?
Canines, I know we're using the word scan instead of searches. Have we talked to, for legal counseling about illegal searches and seizures without a probable cause, you know, running a dog around?
Yeah, so the city, city attorney did review this document, so.
Because my fear is, are we going to report to this board how many dog searches we had in the months? Will the data be shared? I don't want it to be turned into, every day we don't have scanners in the building, so we're doing dog searches. So, because it says superintendent and DPD superintendent can order it. They can order it every day, canine search, and what is the cost involved? Is there an additional expenditure to the school district for calling for a canine search?
I think that's why they, we clarified that it had to be either me, Amy, or that position so that it wouldn't be, you know?
Just the teacher and then?
Just a teacher, somebody saying, hey, we smell something, let's get the dogs in here. You know, it really has to be, and we're more on the preventative side of it rather than the reactive side of it, if that makes sense.
What's the cost involved in a canine search?
There's, we don't, there's no cost for us.
It's free. See, I don't want a school to smell, feel like a police state, although I understand what the objective is being achieved here. It's just the perception that canine searches every day called by somebody.
Without the language, we, because our, our MOU didn't speak to it at all. So that's why we're like, we, we need something in here so that, one, they can't just run in and run canine searches whenever they want to. And, and, and how do we do it if needed?
The bullet above talks about searches, but there was a probable cause for it. That's a legal language, right? Here, we changed the word scan instead of searches to go under that illegal search and seizure clause, which is protected by the constitution, right? A lawyer can speak more than I do, but.
Only with constitutional officers, so it's a police, but the, the school administration can do a search anytime they want. They're not constitutional officers.
And we're doing property, not people. So we're scanning for, you know, if somebody thinks there's something in the building, and I think we had that, we had to get in there.
The language does talk about individuals in between. You know, canines will not be used to conduct body searches of any individual, that detection group drugs, paraphernalia, weapons, explosives. So you got to come close to an individual.
No, it could be in a locker, it could be in a room, it could be in a locker room, it could be in a, in a
Backpack.
Backpack that we say, okay, leave your backpack, let students exit. I mean, there are just other ways of doing that without having them scanned or search children or staff.
But Dr. Carter, your point, point is also well taken, I know the clerk is recording all of this. Is there anyone else who has not spoken on this particular matter that would like to interject any comments around the discussion? Mr. Andrews, please go right ahead.
So SSOs, will there be a MOU for that as well?
There'll be a policy on, on how we operate.
Okay.
Yeah, we're developing that right now.
Thank you all for putting that in elementary schools, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Dr. Carter, did you have something else you wanted?
Well, I was, I had a conversation with someone regarding students getting stopped for smelling like marijuana. When now they may leave a home where the parents can smoke, and when they go to schools, you know, you, you take that smell with you. So I just wonder how we're doing with that. Are we searching every child that smells like marijuana? Because there may be way more, and, but they may not have done anything wrong, but then their, oh, their day is messed up because now they're stopped and searched and asked, you know, what do you, are you smoking? Let me smell your bag and all of that, and are we applying that consistently?
Well, two things on that, first of all, for the public to reminder, as a reminder, for people under 21, marijuana remains not legal. So we think none of our students should be engaged in that activity. And we encourage, obviously, families not, not do that as well. You know, I, it, it is a, that is a challenge, what you're speaking of, if somebody comes. We've, we've seen young, young students, much too young to have even been involved in, in that activity, coming to school and smelling like that, and, you know, even had complaints from other parents about being around. So that's a significant challenge that we, I don't know that we've figured out a way to resolve, yeah.
Dr. Day?
Just one, I know you want to move on to the next agenda item. I was invited by Officer Ramirez, who's the SRO at EC Glass, to come, she put it, clear the halls with her, which just means walk the halls generally between classes, but I was there when the classes changed as well. And just to see firsthand what she sees on a daily basis. And I don't want to violate any confidences, but except to say that although we are trying to not make the SROs responsible for school disciplinary issues, the SROs are very knowledgeable about what's going on. And they may have information that would be useful to the principal and assistant principals in deciding how to handle a particular disciplinary issue. They do make, I think, monthly reports, there's a, a police sergeant that oversees all the SROs and they make reports. Officer Ramirez called it her rotation report. And those are given to the sergeant, the SRO sergeant. And we might consider asking if we can see those.
Well, so I, I get them everywhere.
Yeah, and she, she shared hers with me, but it is confidential because it mentions students' names. I haven't shared it with anyone else. Maybe she shouldn't have, okay. But my point is, I think that information maybe should be viewable by the board maybe in a closed meeting. Because this is giving us information about what's going on in the halls of our schools.
I think that, I, I, even the persons who didn't speak, I, I think that, that we appreciate the attention to this. And I, I by no means want to rush the item at all. I, I do want to make sure that. I, I do, uh, want to make sure that I'm clear on a couple of things, Dr. Edwards. Um, there's a part of me that has heard maybe a, a previous superintendent, maybe, say that this MOU is, is between you and the, and the chief. So you were saying to us that we are going to determine whether you will fix your signature to this? I just want to be clear.
Yeah, we, we do, you do vote on this, um, per, like, in our policy that we have to, have to bring it every two years and review it, but yes.
All right, so, having discussed it tonight, are you saying that in, uh, May 2nd or whenever we meet in May, this is going to be an action item?
Yes.
All right, so I've heard a lot tonight about what people think about this and that, and others who may not have voiced their concerns. Uh, I would hope that we can get all of this, uh, if you have suggestions or thoughts, uh, passed along so that we can kind of talk about it, uh, share thoughts in the proper way, of course, prior to the, uh, meeting of this matter will be voted on. Uh, I, whether you have been on the board for a year or nine years, uh, I hope all of us are thinking, um, of, of being a kid in school. I, I gotta somehow go to school every week that school is in for however many weeks, and I'm, I'm going there to get my education. And so there are many who have struggles, and I do appreciate some of those concerns that I've heard. They have a lot of struggles trying to get to school and come home and be able to go back to school the next day. And so I particularly support the language as is because we have debated this across the years. I haven't heard a lot of comments. Administration, have you heard any comments from Virginia organizing or parents or unrest about anything? But some of the language is the way it is. It's because, I think the deputy superintendent mentioned the school to prison pipeline. Dr. Gupta mentioned police state. Uh, we've got to figure out how to do this, keep our schools safe, have discipline. We also got to remember that these kids are trying to get to school, come home, and be able to go back to school, many of them. And so, uh, those building principals have a responsibility, and I'm not prepared to say I'm turning that completely over to, uh, law enforcement to make those decisions in schools. Not suggesting that, it's saying that. We've got to be careful about how we word things and the realities of what happens with kids, depending on where they are coming from and how they go to school to get an education. I'll close on this. It's horrific to see. I've seen it in public education, I've seen it in higher education, where children are literally trying to get into a class or in a school or in a college classroom, and they are intercepted before they can go in there, put in a car, and reroute it somewhere else. They've done what they supposed to, they haven't done it right, I understand all that. I just think that there's a lot that goes into, to that process. So this was a valuable conversation, very lengthy but very valuable. But I hope that everybody will understand that much of what's in this document has been vetted through a lot of public consideration, and we'll have those same people coming back again.
Proceed your question, would you be taking a vote on it or?
Yeah, apparently so, on May the 2nd or whatever the, Madam Clerk, when is the next meeting?
May 2nd.
May 2nd.
With the canine searches, my vote will be no, and I'm just telling you enough.
I understand.
Because that's, uh, not a good thing to do.
All right, well, if there's no one else who wants to speak to this matter, that'll be coming up on May the 2nd. Uh, if we take a two or three minute break, and then we'll go right into our seven items of retreat. We want to do this real quick because, well, Dr. Brennan, we're gonna lose you in my moments. But, uh, I need a two or three minute break to clear my head. And we're gonna go into these seven things and give our best attention to each of them, all right? On our, uh, retreat discussion, and what we want, uh, Madam Clerk, I don't want to overwork you, but somehow we do need to capture for sure the spirit. She's got all of her stuff ready. Um, and so, uh, first piece, and if there's seven items, that won't work. I know if we did 10 minutes a piece, we'd be out here in an hour and 10 minutes. Um, so y'all just think about that. Look at Dr. Gupta, look at me. All right, the first item is an opportunity for us, uh, actually, it will flow into the second item as well, but we're going to deal with, uh, two of our committees and then move into the third. And we want to get an opportunity to, um, kind of think about going forward, how these two committees can work more effectively and efficiently to enhance communication with individual board members, maybe even serve as work groups, and bring recommendations to the school board. As you know, on our, uh, governing body, uh, i- at council level and other groups, if a committee meets and they bring something to the full board and it's properly communicated throughout the entire representative group, in the case of council, you have seven, they then will bring some recommendations maybe, and there would be no need of a second because there would be, uh, at least two persons in, in that group. And then the board could decide. We seem to like letting everything come to the full board first without recommendations. That's kind of been the way we've been. And of course, if the board wants to continue that, it can. But I often hear, and I try to do the best I can with this, that we don't want to be meeting for hours and hours. I continue to tell you, there have been boards that have met until 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock in the morning. We've never done that unless we go to a council meeting. And then some boards, they meet so quickly that by the time they sit down and say the pledge, they're ready to adjourn, and maybe or maybe not, their school divisions are being effective in what they do. What is your pleasure tonight, uh, about a framework for our committees? Are there any suggestions on how we can be more effective, efficient? Dr. Edwards, you may or may not want to weigh on this, any board member. And then ultimately, we want to say between now and this budget cycle, that both groups would do all they can to advocate for our 1550 plan, and how would we best do that? All right, Dr. Gupta?
You know, I've been on board for five, six years now. If my time applies. We've been talking achievement gap, achievement gap all along.
Yep.
We don't have a committee on academics on the board. So we talk about it, but we don't do anything about it as a school board, other than questioning whosoever comes and makes a presentation. Number two, we spend a lot of time on discipline committee. And I have shared a document with all of you through Mistake, through Roanoke County, where they have a discipline rev- review team, which decides, and one of the administration's concern was consistency, and that takes care of that, because the same team is making decisions, there's a consistency there, instead of a musical chair of school board members like us, where two cases are on two different days with similar situations with different decision outcomes. So what I would personally like to see is a formation of a academics committee, which is responsible for reducing the achievement gap going forward and monitoring it on an ongoing basis, and involving school board in discipline only when there is an expulsion is needed. Short of that, it should be the superintendent's job and her team. And the, the document is with all of you, which later on, I don't know, Dr. Edwards, you got the copy of that document. And to me, um, that's a decent model, and that's, takes a time away from reactive mode to a proactive mode where we are focusing on academics.
All right, Dr. Gupta, uh, point well taken. We'll take up the discipline recommendation when we get to the discipline committee. I think you've got something, uh, valid that needs to be heard. Uh, as it relates to the first part of what you suggested, if everybody has before them, uh, school board committee, uh, policy BCEZ, I think that, uh, Dr. Gupta is bringing something powerful before us. Uh, prior to, maybe four or five years ago, oh, time moves fast, somewhere around that Nate, Nate, we only had, uh, two committees, finance and facilities, and student discipline. And there was a thought that we needed to get involved more in advocacy around any number of things, communication, uh, of what we're doing. And so we created a third committee for that purpose. And Dr. Gupta is now suggesting that maybe this framework needs to include a fourth committee, which deals specifically with academics. I do want you to know that there are boards in Virginia, not to mention those outside of our state, that have such com- uh, committee. Once again, we have not necessarily favored having a lot of things like this, but I think that they have some value. And, uh, particularly the advocacy has increased and will need to continue to increase over the next few days and weeks. What are your thoughts about this academic committee? When we proposed the community relations and legislative advocacy, and then we kind of worded it locker, legislative advocacy and community relations, and I'd asked that this would be reversed, Dr. Edwards, uh, the language here.
I thought it was reversed, sorry.
What I'm looking at, it still says community relations and legislative advocacy. But, but, uh, Madam Clerk, make sure that that is changed so that it will flow with our acronym. But we said conceptually that we needed one. We went through the appropriate working group, and, uh, Dr. Brennan, you may remember many of that in the... We vetted out the language, brought it to the group, and we did it, and we instituted it, and it has had some added value. Even though tonight, we may not know all of the details of what that would looks like, look, look like. But one of the things we could say is that we want, um, would that be governing, that be the governance, uh, work group, Dr. Edwards?
Uh, it's probably, um, curriculum and instruction, and just...
Oh, it would be curriculum and instruction in this point, yeah. That that group would go and take a look at this and bring a recommendation back to, uh, the full board for the creation of an academic committee with a focus on the achievement gap. Now, I'm willing to support that. Dr. Gupta, I don't know what you have done to me, but I've supported everything that you have presented.
You must be going to the...
Questions, thoughts on that, go ahead, Dr. Edwards.
I just want to add, just for historical records, in March of 2019, we did have a revision to this policy BCEZ that included a student achievement committee. And at that time, I don't know if you guys remember, we voted not to do...
We sure, what you, what, thank you, Dr. Edwards.
Do that.
That's what I like, the superintendent's on top of everything. Because I know we did, but it, it just didn't get any traction.
Right.
Then.
There was language, though.
But there's language. So it looks like that Dr. Gupta is suggesting that we need to revisit that and pull it out because it would, it would achieve what is being said. What are your thoughts? And we're still within our 10 minutes on this discussion.
But I'm, I'm not suggesting four committees.
I thought you were.
I was saying, discipline committee should go out and discipline revenue.
Oh, you, oh, wait, oh, wait, let me...
So that will be on the...
Let's deal with, but see, now you, Dr. Gupta, let me buy in on your, uh, your committee first, and then we'll talk about whether you need to delete something later. And I, I think that you have support maybe for the adding of that, and I think that's huge. So let's just stay with that right now. And I'll take off the table how many committees we have, so that one would be a part of the discussion. It's just whether or not we think we should have, what did you call that, Dr. Edwards?
It was called the student achievement.
Student achievement, and that, I remember it well. Just didn't have any traction, uh, Randy, at that time. Maybe it does it now. Go ahead.
I agree that we have said over and over that student achievement is one of our primary concerns. And, uh, Dr. Coleman gives us reports about various aspects of it. But I personally don't feel that we as a board have done anything. We, we've listened to, we've discussed it, we've heard reports of various, uh, statistics that relate to that issue. So I do think the board needs to find a way to be more proactive in that regard. Now, whether the way to do that is form a separate subcommittee of the board, or whether we need to, maybe at the beginning of each year, as a year-long agenda item, say on these meetings, we're going to talk about this aspect of our plan to improve student achievement. First aspect would be what is our plan to achieve student achievement? Sam has, has described things as he sees them. But I feel like the board needs to be much more engaged in... But I feel like the board needs to be much more engaged in what are we actually doing? And how are we going to measure it? It's one thing to get the SO result, SOL results back and look through and find the positive things that we can say. It's another thing, before we see those results, to ask, how should we be measuring it? And then look at the results. That's one of the ways that statistics are typically abused, is you find what what way you can extract a positive message from the data in front of you, rather than asking the question you really need to answer first and then design the statistics around it. So I don't know whether the best way for us to proceed is to have a separate committee or not, but I think we need to do something different.
All right, before I go back to the persons who wanted to speak to this, again, according to your policy that is in existence BCEZ, there are two options that could happen with this if we wanted to do anything. I was referring to standing committees. But there is also the prerogative of the chair to create a special committee or the board itself to create a special committee for a specific task that would absorb itself upon the completion of that task. And then necessarily have to be a standing committee. Those are the two pieces. Dr. Gupta is the one who's presented to this, which of the two are you wanting?
I was looking for standing because it's not something you do today and then tomorrow it'll go away, it'll take time.
Take time.
To time. And number two, you see superintendent is the person who reports to this board. So I take off her as a chair, we are holding her. And the two pillars under her are the deputy superintendent of CNI and a deputy superintendent of strategic operations. And you look at these committee structures, both standing committees are all with one pillar and the other pillar is just left out in the core without any guidance from the board. I know superintendent is great enough to guide them, but if I look at how the organizational structure aligns with our committee structure, I see a misalignment there. The whole much weightage is given to that strategy and operations and nothing to the curriculum and instruction.
Is there any support for looking into a standing committee around student achievement?
I think it's worth looking into, yes.
Okay. Any objection to it? You just feel that this would be, and remember, and I'm just keeping it real, you are the ones who are going to have to surveil these committees, right?
I don't.
That's the extra time you're going to have to, you got to, you got to add that to you already, number of hours. But when you weigh it out, I have to support Dr. Gupta, and I think that that is a necessary component. Not to get in the way of, but to maybe be one of those supporting pieces to to that argument. Dr. Carter.
So how do you see this as working?
See, it's a very conceptual idea, so it needs to be vetted out.
Washed out, sure.
And talk through. We are just, this is just thrown out right now, but to me, a- as I've been thinking is achievement gap, achievement gap, that's what we hear every time going any community event. Last time too, I was hearing, what what you have guys, what guy, what you have done about achievement gap. So for board, we see this output, which is presentation, but there's no uh and we say we are using a whole bunch of strategies, but there's no input and involvement of board on a regular basis like it is for finance, or is it for advocacy? So I'm saying there's a lot more for external and money management, but nothing for academics, which is the core function of this organization.
Dr. Carter, did you have something you wanted to say? You didn't? All right, then, Mrs. Andrews?
I don't disagree with either one of you guys. In fact, I I think that this is just as important as the fifteen fifty. And I don't know if there is a, I don't know if a committee is what's needed. I think the whole board should weigh in on that conversation. I don't know if if it's fair to have three people be on a committee and then report back to the rest of the board. I think it's just as important that we push fifteen fifty through this budget, we get through this cycle, and then achievement gap becomes our primary focus moving forward. I mean, I don't know if I should, I don't feel like we should put the weight on, the weight of instruction and achievement gap on three individuals, that's a lot of pressure. So.
You'd rather see the whole.
I'd rather see the whole board be involved in that process just because it 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 is what we do, right? It's this, this is the reason why we're all here, to help educate kids, so.
Since this is a retreat, I don't quote the first names now, but Anthony, I think you've really brought something to us. Sandwiching this so that we can keep moving, is this whole notion of whether or not, this may be the wrong word to use, there's enough trust in our nine-member board to not always have to flesh out everything as a committee of the whole, but to trust X amount of people to do some of that groundwork and find ways to interact with each other in in ways that would be legal to ultimately present something to the full body in which the full body has ownership for either saying to the committee, go back and work on this, change it completely, or whatever the case may be. But one of the things I want you all to think about is we frame out the work going forward and the next iteration of individuals. That if you're talking about efficiency of time and effectiveness at the end of the day, how do you want to do that? Because when everything comes for full, loaded discussion amongst nine people, it's hard unless you just well, can I say a word that I won't say? Unless you just say, I agree with everything, I ain't saying nothing, you have a, uh, you're going to have lengthy meetings because there's a lot of stuff to discuss, if it's being discussed for the first time, yes.
You know, the problem I have is for three, four years, I've been hearing achievement gap, achievement gap, achievement gap. But nothing has, the needle has, may have moved a little bit, COVID came, you can blame it on that. But smaller committees or teams allows specialty within our bigger group. I'm just going to avoid him, Mr. Preston. And she's academic, she's worked in the school system, you know? So you bring the expertise there to work with the staff, to move in a direction. And as you said, the whole board trusts their opinion and trusts their work, that uh they'll be saying, no, 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 this is a lousy work, I cannot go with it. So you got to trust that they will do a good job, but it allows you momentum to be generated with, by, and with experts.
Despite the direction that we go moving forward, right? Let me, let me be clear that I've built a relationship with each and every last one of you. Relationships are built on trust, right? So I can honestly say that I trust each person at this desk, like, for real, right? And so I trust that you have the best interest of the school division in mind, the best interest of kids in mind. I never go back home and question whether Dr. Day really is thinking about kids, right? Or I wonder if Dr. Carter's really thinking about it. It never crosses my brain. When I leave here, I feel like as a board, as a current board, we do really good work together, right? We may not always agree, but we don't argue. And we walk away feeling like we've done something. So I can say that I trust each and every last person on this board.
See, uh, the micro-level analysis, the full board, as Dr. Coleman was saying, you don't have time on the agenda.
Sure.
Pressure to do a deeper dive into some of those issues, like you said, fifteen fifty. You know, that's the finance committee's work and they take a deeper dive into it. And achievement gap, we've been doing on the surface, uh, wobbling around for months and years now. I can say the word years, Dr. Coleman, safely. And he takes the brunt of the heat, I just stand behind him watching. And so maybe if we keep doing the same thing, the needle will not move. So my question was, is it time to do something different?
I'm open to that, I'll support that.
You know, so that was the point I was raising, is it time to do something different? Because what we have been doing has not worked for our kids. And academics is the key soul of this whole operation. You know, everything else is there important, but academics is the most important thing.
All right, well, my my ears aren't the best, but I think I'm hearing that from our little retreat on this matter that there is enough support to say to the CNI work group to go back and look at the student achievement language, talk about it, interact with folk, and bring something back at a future meeting for further discussion on the matter. Yes, Dr. Day?
I would add to your suggestion that we, the CNI work group consists of myself, who's and and Sharon, we're the two. If there's others that want to participate wi- with the CNI work group for this aspect of their discussion, that we ought to be, allow temporary appointments.
Can I volunteer, Ms. Preston?
I agree with you one hundred percent, volunteer, yep.
Before we, before we accommodate that, is there any special dynamic of keeping it with two relating to what that means when you have a full?
Once it's three, it's a board meeting. It's not a work group when you have.
Oh, I see, you're thinking about the foyer and the gallery.
But to support Dr. Day's language, those two can individually or whatever, reach out to other key stakeholders on the board to get feedback and input in the preparation of whatever they're doing.
Yeah, and and with any policy as a work group, and we do the same thing, like, we may not necessarily have the principal or the athletic director at the work group, but we might have floated that policy saying, this is, this is what we're looking at. The same way Sam said to, you know, this is what Robbie Dooley, the CTE, take a look at this, give me any input that you see. So we always have the ability to do that.
Okay, so then also, and am I thinking maybe, Dr. Waterco will correct me if I'm wrong, am I maybe hearing that there might be some life to the possibility that in the future uh these committees may want to look at being able to make recommendations to the full board?
Well, the CNI work group makes recommendations to the board.
Yeah, but that would be.
That's policy, that's.
Yeah. I don't understand the distinction.
Yeah, I guess so, and I can understand why you wouldn't. What what I'm trying to say, ultimately, is there any thought amongst the board, and we're moving on, that maybe we could get to the point where whether we have two, three, or however many actual standing committees, that those standing committees would work within their committee, reach out to people individually, get all the kind of behind-the-scenes support, so that maybe a two-hour discussion of work, working the board individually and whatever, slices off two hours off of an actual board meeting of discussion, maybe, but does give the opportunity for full discussion for however long and guarantees maybe a greater efficiency or an effectiveness in the outcomes. Are we willing to say, we're now hearing from Dr. Senhar, and Senhar is saying that we have a recommendation from the finance and facilities committee, blah, blah, blah. And that that motion would not need a second because it's coming from the committee. Now, as Dr. Gupta said, you may absolutely say this is the worst thing ever. And then that committee has to go back or some motion is brought up on the floor as a substitute. But it allows us to be more efficient, more effective, maybe be helpful to staff and not having to do a whole lot of other unnecessary back and forth, maybe. Is there any thought on that? At the, up to this point, we've just have been totally against the idea. So I'm not trying to push anything down anybody's throat.
But nothing's stopping us from doing that, or the committee chair to saying, this is a committee recommendation, and I bring it for a vote.
I think, it seems to me we have done that.
Yeah.
Isn't that how the finance committee worked? We we brought forward several recommendations.
No, we haven't done that.
From my perspective.
The chair can bring it, the the committee chair can bring it to this board and say.
Well, but when it usually, Dr. Gupta, when it has brought like that in the past, we'll reference former board members or whomever and say, no, this has to be first discussed initially amongst the nine. Even though I do hear what you're saying, Dr. Gupta, it is, it is happening.
Seeing the distinction between that and what we've done.
I'll tell you exactly for sure what the distinction would be, making a motion coming from the committee. That hadn't happened yet.
It can be either way, committee can make or somebody else can make. Because the board is an evolving thing, you know, it's like three years, people are here, then they move on. So um, but the process is in place.
Dr. Carter, you want to say?
I said some, some would be, some have accused that us of that being backdoor, backdoor um politics or backdoor, doing all of that in the back instead of coming out and talking about it more.
So.
The finance committee, I see almost, it's like a mini board meeting. Most of the board members are there, so um.
So I think what I'm hearing, Madam Clerk, if you could, that there's the possibility for us to explore that these committees will actually be trusted and that they can come before the board with a motion that would not need a second for discussion. All right? Now, the last part on this first, part of these first two items now takes us to, well, before that, does both groups okay with appreciating, I'm talking about Lockery and FNF, fifteen fifty advocacy, it's got to happen. And we've got to get out in front of this without Dr. Edwards always having to be the one up front. That uh there is a meeting, for example, on April the twenty-fifth, next Tuesday, that you can sign up for. Uh, Madam Chair of the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, you know, finance, how do we, just take a minute to discuss that right fast. We must, we got to fight for this, y'all, in my personal opinion. It's worthy to be fought for, go ahead.
In politics, you know, it's a game of numbers.
I'm listening.
If three bodies show up, they know it's just three people, whether, it doesn't matter if you are the king of the England or you are the custodian of Lynchburg City Schools. But if there are thousand people show up, that sends a message that this is an important issue.
That's right.
So I would say, uh, I I wholeheartedly support fifteen fifty, but the beneficiaries of this program also need to show up and tell these politicians how important it is for them, for their families, for their community. And that needs to happen.
All right, so would you all, would the two be willing to do what you can to help? I think there was a good number of persons on the eleventh, wait a minute, yeah, the eleventh. And there's another opportunity on the twenty-fifth, and there are other opportunities and ways in which we can creatively advocate. Are you, two of you all okay?
Unfortunately, I may not be able to come on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, yes.
I'll be proctoring exams at Sweet Brian.
I got you, okay, all right. But your committees are okay and supportive of it?
Is it okay if I write a letter or something?
Yes, yes, they read, they, they, she does that every, every time she asks how many emails.
Yeah, you can write a letter to Alicia Finney.
Yep. Very good, Andrews. Dr. Carter, what are your thoughts about it?
I can't commit, I mean, I, the twenty-fifth, I had other things scheduled, but.
Okay, who else is on your?
I can be though, I mean, just double-check my calendar.
All right, Randy and uh, who's the third person?
It's me, I think.
Yeah.
Talking about May twenty-fifth or April?
April, April twenty-fifth.
I will not be here.
At what time?
Oh, I'm not sure on the time, is it seven thirty? Seven thirty, seven thirty, seven thirty meeting. All right, so let's push, Dr. Gupta has given us an excellent suggestion as well. Get, let's work on encouraging getting people out who appreciate the value of the fifteen fifty, et cetera, who can accurately make the hard, but very, um, yeah, hard, you know, in a, in a, in a, not trying to beat people up, but just make the hard, sellable case of why do we need this? And we work hard to get as many people to come and 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 demonstrate uh at all levels why this is important.
Is there an opportunity to work with the LEA on this?
Could be, sir. You you help us with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so I think we can move on to this discipline piece now, but if we, let's, let's do that and get as many persons as we can to let uh our seven counselors know that this is important. All right, thank you. Now, discipline, Dr. Gupta has a recommendation.
So I I, as I said before, I shared a document with you from the Roanoke County Public Schools. And I was looking for what are other models of doing discipline committees are out there? And I found out through Roanoke County Public School, school board member, that they have a discipline rev- uh review team, which is superintendent designees from different areas. And up to three hundred and sixty-five day suspensions are, or whatever the decisions are handled by them. And but if there's a decision to expel, then it comes for the full board hearing. And the board hears that decision in closed session or open, that I have not asked them, but so it it it, in in my mind, one of the concerns at the administration level was consistency of decisions. And this prob, this structure takes care of that. and this prob, this structure takes care of that, because you have one single team which makes all the decisions.
All right, so this is a deep discussion. The floor is open for discussion. At the end of the day, I think I'm hearing Dr. Gupta suggests the elimination of a discipline committee and allow a process in which he has provided you information on to be the substitute for that. What are your thoughts about that or other thoughts, Dr. Senhar?
I like that idea. I have really struggled this year, especially in light of the feedback we got, which was really useful and enlightening about, and really exposed how little we may know in some cases about the backstory on some of these cases. And we make a decision that we think is in the best interest of the school and the student, and in some cases, it, it's, it it has unintended consequences. And I've also struggled with consistency, not knowing what other committees have done with similar situations, even with cases that I've been involved in that appear to be similar, but we've responded differently to them. And I, I, I really worry about that, um, and what we're doing. I, you know, at first, I really liked that we, we seemed to have more options available to us to not just go full three hundred and sixty-four, up to three hundred and sixty-four days, boom, that's it. But as we got into it, it just made things a lot more complicated with all that discretion. So, I don't know where the balance is in that, and, um, and, um, I think a regular standing committee or a group or, or somehow that consistently does those. But I don't know who would take that burden or, you know, how we'd be able to establish the model that you have if it would be with people already staffed in Student Services to do that.
That's the exploratory nature of this.
Yeah.
The goal is to superintendent or her crew to explore, looking at Roanoke County Public School as the base model and see what tweaking needs to be done to make it a feasible option, or if it is a feasible option, the number one, and then how could we implement that?
Yeah.
This is not a said-and-done deal, this is to explore an alternate way, to me, which in Dr. Brandon's email solves most of the issues we've been talking, talking about in regard to discipline.
Okay, so we all are mindful of the fact that the current discipline committee structure, if, if nothing else, was strengthened by the fact that the Office of Civil Rights indicated that we had challenges. And so, uh, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
And so, whatever the board decides to do, we just need to be mindful that we have some type of oversight to make sure we don't get back there again, however we do it. And, um, uh, Dr. Senhar, I somewhat share some of your sentiments. Um, at this point, I don't really necessarily know what to do, because if, if the building folk think one way, and if you hear the matter and you have thoughts and concerns, I don't know if we're pitting ourselves against each other or how we express where there are concerns, but at the end of the day, I don't want to set anybody up to have to go back where we were in whatever we're gonna do in this matter. So, I'm certainly open to exploring the Roanoke possibility, but. Dr. Day and then Dr. Carter.
So, I think we would need to know, uh, more specifically what those, uh, human rights concerns are or were that you alluded to, and, um, if establishing, changing to a discipline review team can be done in such a way that it, it, it doesn't worsen those considerations or not. The other thing is, you know, we did have in a closed meeting some conversation with some principals, and I don't want to say anything here that violates the confidentiality of that closed meeting, but I think, um, this potential discipline review team may be a way to address some of those concerns. The experience of people in Roanoke County, um, the person who communicated with Dr. Gupta said that, um, they felt that it involved, uh, some of the school staff and administrat- administrators better than, um, the way that we do it, and I think that was one of the concerns that I heard in that closed meeting discussion, so it's possible that we could design, uh, the workings of a discipline review team to potentially address some of the issues that were raised to us by our own principals.
Okay, uh, for Dr. Carter, is there any way to be able to pull together what he just asked and it shared in whatever the appropriate way about what it was about and?
The, the information that led to that? I mean, I could dig it up and get some historical information, yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Day. Dr. Carter?
From my memory, it was regarding consistency. And that, um, the application, again, with, that it wasn't consistent, it was more of seemed like harsher penalties for certain students than others. So, that was a way to get a different voice, to have, I guess, fresh eyes to look at that, and that is a plus, is the different perspective coming from school board versus people that are in there and may have, can you have too much information? But the other thing is the backstory, we can, we ask for information, and we've given information, but the information sometimes changes, where sometimes you can see exactly a pattern of behavior, where you see a student that may have thirty-seven, fifteen, and then you can see that, and where sometimes the grades dropped off, then that can kind of let you know, and, um, some information about whether or not what interventions have been made, whether there is a manifestation, uh, meeting, and just different things that come into play. But I think, because, as I stated, or before, we didn't always do this. I think it started maybe the second or third year, you remember? We didn't always have the disciplinary committee. We weren't part, but then we were pretty much, it had to be done for that fresh set of eyes and because of, um, the findings, and we don't want to get back there.
Was there an actual legal case or a court ruling or something?
Yeah, well, they, um, the Office of Civil Rights came in, and they were here for a significant amount of time to, to make sure that we were consistent in the way we, um, dished out or did discipline. And I know one of my first meetings, and I still have not seen that, they were, we were gonna come up with a list of, um, discipline and the responses to those disciplines. And always, my concern is consistency. If one thing happens, then this is what happens, and this is what, I think we may have gotten, I see, um, Dr. Brown has, does have some, uh, formula, but that was, that was a lot of it.
To your point, Dr. Carter, and then I know Dr. Gupta wants to say something. We, we actually spent, uh, Dr. Bray Brown was here with us, we spent several meetings back on that section there where our distinct news and advance reporter is, uh, and we went through every single solitary policy dealing with discipline, et cetera, whatever, I mean, it was meeting after meeting, and we really don't know what results of that, but that probably needs to be revised, but all of that was forced upon us to do. Dr. Gupta, you want to say?
You mentioned the word efficiency.
Yeah.
And now, in the current system, every time there's a meeting, we gotta look at the Director of Student Services saying, am I consistent? What's your recommendation? So, those freshers of eyes have a, a, a doubt in them, saying, because you gotta look for the expert. But discipline revenue, uh, review team model is, you got experts there, so you don't have to look for a hand-holding saying, tell me if I am going in the right direction or not. If, if, if we are the freshers of eyes, then we should not have a consultant sitting there telling us, am I consistent? Am I going in the right direction? And if that's the case, then leave the bus to the pros to drive it.
All right. Uh, Dr. Carter?
Well, when I've been in, um, disciplinary committee meetings, we don't ask him to hold our hands or to tell us, are we consistent? Um, but if we have questions, we, he may be able to address them, but that's not his role in the ones I'm in to. And we, he doesn't hold our hand or tell us.
He may be an exception, but to me, as I said, I had concerns because you got prosecutor and you're defendant, and you, three people are making a decision, then both parties need to be present if there is an additional material being brought to the attention of those people. When the secondary information is shared and one party has left the room, what is the, what you're doing is you're basically, uh, not granting them the same, um, rights is not the right word, what will be, you know, opportunity to add.
I, I, I hear bo, I hear both of you, Dr. Gupta, uh, this president go right here.
No, I was just gonna say, simply thinking about the consistency aspect back in the olden days when I was Dr. Brown, and the Director of Student Services, what, what happened was, when the discipline committee hearing, whatever you want to call it, met, I was the person that sat in the, the big chair, and then Kathy Vire, who was the alternative ed person, and I'm trying to think of it, Zoe Wickham Stokes, who represented the, the social worker side of it. We were the, really, the, the decision-makers, if you will. I think that led to a level of consistency because we were gonna be the same people all the time, listening to the stories, and that led to consistency, because I'm always gonna think pretty much the same way, and so are these, these other people as well. And it also gave, um, it gave the, the perspective of, of a school administrator, of a person that dealt with behavioral challenges and social challenges. So, it was, it was all of that, and the decision was made in the room with all of us there at, at the same time. So, that kind of addressed your, your idea of the decision being made without people knowing, you know, what, what, what the conversation was about. So, I don't know, maybe some thought needs to be given to, is there, is, not that there, there shouldn't be a, a, a discipline committee, but who should the committee be made up of? You know, should it be some people that are representative from those other aspects? Because I think they certainly lend some, they lend some weight to, because Kathy could obviously say, we have the ability to serve this student in alternative ed because we can do A, B, and C. Because Zoe could say, I'm aware that this child has an IEP or doesn't, or has these social or behavioral difficulties, and we need to be aware of, of all of this, and so, maybe it's the people that, that are making up the committee that needs to be thought about.
Ms. President, you bring an institutional knowledge to this discussion, and I think that really has claimed my attention. What was the appeal process like in that situation?
Then it went to the board. If, if there was an appeal, then the appeal went to the board.
Because way back in the day, which obviously might have been after your situation, I think the only time we ever dealt with anything as a board was an appeal, either for a teacher or a student.
And then, so what you hear when it changed, it changed in twenty seventeen, I think, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
Probably when you guys were under the voluntary OCR, because that is one of the reporting strategies. From two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen, we had to report out on all of the percentage of referrals, percentage of suspensions by race, and by gender, too, was a problem.
I, you know, I kind of like what you just said, but I'm gonna leave it alone. Go ahead, Ms. Andrew.
Well, I was gonna say, I like, I like what she's saying, too. I like what Dr. Gupta is saying. And I, I've struggled a little bit on the disciplinary committee meetings because having known a couple of the students and/or the parents.
Yeah.
And so, been kind of selective with my words, if you will, or how I approach things, because those relationships do spill outside of these four walls, right? And so, I have to, so sometimes I struggle with that, like, you know.
But that can be a positive, too, because, because there were lots of times when a parent that came in knew me.
Yeah.
And so, consequently, they were not necessarily gonna wholesale take sides with their kid, they were gonna say, nah.
Oh, okay.
You know, so, I mean, that can, that can, that can go either way.
Yeah, I didn't think about it that way.
But your point is worth taking, many, I'm sure all of us have had that experience.
Yeah.
Maybe, uh, the folk we know or don't know directly, but know enough about, yeah. Dr. Day?
I was just gonna suggest that I think we need to see the actual court order, court report, the documents that we have that have been mentioned here. We need to know what actually were the circumstances that prompted us to change the policy before we can decide if we want to go forward with what Dr. Gupta has proposed.
And in, and in keeping with that, Dr. Edwards, which work group would handle this, uh, policy? Be, uh, where I thought I had, B, BCEA with you?
It's governance.
Yeah, governance. All right, so let, let governance be handling, hounding out what you've given. Nothing will be decided. Dr. Day's point, we get all that information, you bring them together, and that is something that maybe can get to us in, in May or June, uh, about that. So, Dr. Gupta, I think I'm hearing the support for pondering that, uh, governance group, getting the information. Dr. A, Dr. Day requested, heard from, uh, group board member Preston about some valid things, and we can look at that and come back with, with, with something on that.
Who's on governance group?
Bob and myself. Yeah, I like the idea, I think, I like the idea. Yeah, go ahead.
I, just to frame the context, because I'm digging through old documents that sort of predate me before I got here. Um, in twenty nineteen, um, we were released from the voluntary OCR, but at the time that I arrived, I think we only had two, two or three more things that we, we were reporting out on. But in the original agreement, there were several items that you had to report out on, prevention strategies, discipline report, policies, roles, climate surveys, training for not just, uh, staff, but for board members, um, SOR, SRO training, and a whole host of things, which all the dates go back to, uh, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, when those documents were submitted to OCR. So, I can try to look up as much of that as I can, but there were eleven items for discipline alone that were in that voluntary OCR report.
See, submission of a report is different from them telling us that you need to change something.
But that was what we were responding to. They gave us eleven for discipline, as I'm seeing. I think it's eleven action items that said, you need to do something about this, and then show that you're doing. That's what the reporting was on.
And because we did it, and it appeared to help.
Yes.
We were able to come up from under that. But, and then, of course, you know, we've got some other things that we've been talking about, start with a you, that maybe can help us with all of this, but the point I'm trying to say is that I think if we look at that, see what's what, you know, see if something different, as you're proposing, would keep everything consistent and fair, and still an appeal process to it. You know, I'm not gonna say how many cases we have Thursday, but we've got cases Thursday. You know, sometimes we've had to double up with two committees, that's a lot of hours every Thursday that could maybe go through what's due to achievement. So, anyway.
If OCR is so worried about us going away from discipline committee, how are they allowing Roanoke County Public Schools to continue in?
Well, I think that's, that's the, the power of what you're saying. Now that we are under, up from under there, and we continue to not have those type of challenges with maybe something different, not creating any additional challenges, we're good.
Because technically, if it's a legal violation, then a violation is a violation. So, any school district in Virginia, if it's a Virginia, uh, court or statute, they're violating, right? So, everybody, all of us are under the same umbrella, so.
That wasn't, we're not saying that the Roanoke is violating anything. This is different, that's what, the report she was talking about from ye, from years ago.
We, we're saying the same thing. In other words, we just want to make sure, I think Dr. Day said it well, whatever we do with this new component, whether it be your specific or modi, modified or whatever, whatever is different, we need to make sure that everything is consistent and done fair.
This is not mine. I just saw that lady someplace through online many.
All right, all right. Uh, can we take two more minutes?
This is not my baby.
I, I got you. Two more minutes on this, uh, second piece, and then we only have five others to go. Is there anyone who wants to say anything about the current process? Because those were, the discussion we've had so far about potential changes for the future that aren't going to change anything about our realities every Thursday.
So, are we still talking about the discipline?
Yeah, we're still talking about the, this one. Is there anything pertinent that we need clarification? Yeah, we still talking about the, this one. Is there anything pertinent that we need clarification? I do want to remind us that this is an open meeting, right? I mean, it was televised and all of that. So we cannot go in any details concerning a student or anything like that. But is it anything that we need to discuss as a group in, regarding the Discipline Committee process? So that as we move through the remaining Thursdays that we have before the end of June. That you have had a chance to speak to it at the retreat. Because this change could happen before the end of June. Doesn't look like it might, but it could. But if, if, as long as we stay the same, we gotta make sure we are comfortable with the process we have. Any questions?
I think we're at the end now, so two more months to go. I'm almost, my hiking trek is almost over. Deal with it, and if any changes should come next year.
Just deal with it, yeah. Anybody else want to say anything? Dr. Carter?
Just, well, for hearing, to, um, Dr. Gupta is, we can look at, um, disclosure, information all before. While everyone is present and not afterwards.
Okay. Say that again, I wanna make sure I got it.
Any, any information will be heard when bo- everyone is there, and no additional information.
No additional, okay, gotcha.
To be fair to every, both parties.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
I'm not sure. I follow you. What information do you?
In, any information, we just ask it when everyone is present.
You're talking about what happens in a disciplinary hearing?
I'm trying to think of when that happens.
Just to, just to make sure. I'm not saying that it has or does, but just to make sure.
Student or his parent or god have left, nothing new is shared.
Right, right.
Okay.
There's no sidebar feedback from the principal or the.
I got you.
Get it all out while everyone is there.
We all comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Well.
Go ahead, Dr. Day.
I think we need to be sure the principals are comfortable with that, because that's what I thought I heard when we talked to them. That they felt their point of view wasn't being adequately heard. So I'm not.
But, so let's ask ourselves in terms of the process, is it appropriate for the principal to share his or her thoughts about the case? While everybody's there? Dr. Edwards, or Dr. Waterco, somebody?
You mean while somebody's not there?
No, while they're there. Well, my point is, if, if, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say, I don't wanna confuse the issue. If Sharon is saying, full disclosure, nothing new is said once the student leaves. Then the principal would say what he or she wants to say while the person's there.
So which should already be said, anyway, hopefully.
I mean, first, I, I think we, not the committees, I wanna, I think we try to adhere to everybody talking when the, the student is there. I think you have to be flexible, cuz they're, like, that, that principal is gonna have a relationship potentially with that student.
Parents.
And the parent. And I really don't wanna put, we have to look out for staff a little bit. I wanna put, I don't wanna put the staff in a position where they have to be fearful for, who knows, retaliation, hurting a relationship. There may be things that they're just not comfortable saying in front of the student. I understand and appreciate your thought of the right to, uh, confront your accuser again. But I think there are certain instances, and I think we should maintain that flexibility, that, and I can think of an example, I won't say. Where the, uh, staff member was not comfortable talking about certain things in front of the, uh, in front of the staff, and I think rightly so.
Was that information gonna be used against the student?
No.
Or in support of anything?
But it was. It was feedback. It was, it was feedback that I think was important, that we, the disciplinary mem- board members had was, um, here. I don't think it was necessarily, you know, I guess ultimately, yes, it could be used against the student. It wasn't directly about that situation, but it was, uh, it was something that's that, how the staff member felt.
How can you have the other party not have an opportunity to rebuttal? With some, not have an opportunity to have rebut or rebuttal?
Rebuttal?
And then, uh, that information could potentially be used to hurt them, or maybe hurting them in, in terms of the decision making. Is that a fair process?
I, I think it's unfair to put the staff member in the position that they gotta, they have to be that, they have to worry about a longer term relationship. I mean, I mean, that's the bottom line. I just don't, I don't think it's fair to put our staff, our staff members in certain situations where they have to, uh. Ultimately confront, confront the student.
Can I ask Ms. Preston a question? In your com- in your structure, was a principal ever involved in your committee?
The principal was there to give his or her input about what took place.
Recet- recitation of the facts, which is what we do today.
Of course, the other side to that coin is if, if the principal had something that he, he or she felt was really important, that the committee know. That, you know, it's scheduled a week in advance, so they could always call and, and tell you that. I, I want you to be aware that this student's having some difficulty at home that might have impacted his behavior. And I'm just making up stuff, but, but then, cuz I don't wanna say that in front of the parent, cuz that's gonna cause some repercussions for the kid. But now, but I want you to be aware of it, so when you make your decision, you know, that, that at least goes into it. So I mean, there are all kinds of things to consider.
Before we go too deep in this, I think we want to make sure that Dr. Edwards knows, and our outstanding building leaders know. That we support them and that, that they matter to us and their thoughts. At the same time, I think whoever's on that committee has the ability to be able to assess. And I'm just concerned sometimes, how do we make sure in our process, Dr. Edwards, going forward? That we minimize the friction or the fallouts that could come from someone who may have a perspective. That maybe they don't have all the information, but they feel that their perspective is valid without, you understand what I'm saying? And I don't want us to get too deep in this conversation. We end up making statements that would make people feel differently than what we feel about our people. But at the same time, if we're tasked to do this, I'm not sure if I just wanna say, I'm gonna ignore what I'm feeling inside. Because information is being shared to the contrary.
I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here.
Okay.
We're talking about details of, of what a new policy might be. And I think we need to back up and decide if there's gonna be a new policy. What are the general rails that we need to keep within in light of the civil rights issues of the past? And if we decide to go in that direction, that's the time to work out all these details.
But, but Dr. Day, I think you've got a good point, but what, what I think we have done, what I was doing was cutting this down to two minutes, which I'm gonna say thirty seconds now. We recognize about the new piece. I had moved on from that. Uh, what this discussion was, is there anything about the current way we're doing?
Okay.
That we want to make sure that we will clear on. And so what we're really discussing now is Dr. Carter put on the table, that there should be full disclosure and nothing said. Once a parent or guardian or whomever leaves. And, uh, Attorney Tros is making a valid point that we wanna make sure that our staff persons feel as though that they can maintain their professional relationship. And safe relationship with individuals, and I'm a little torn on how you accommodate both of those.
And I think the idea is maintain the flexibility. I don't, I don't wanna have a rigid, hard rule that we don't discuss anything outside the presence of the student. And I think as we do it now, we really, I, I strive, and my other fellow, um, committee members strive to really, anything that's of substance. I want to have the student and parents or, or guardian there. Now, of course, there's always, uh, there's always a, an outlier that, um, that we may have something that needs to be discussed. And I just wanna maintain that flexibility is all. And I, I, I recognize Dr. Carter's point. I, I agree with it, that, you know, the student should have a right to hear everything. But I think there's always gonna be those op, you know, issues where, you know, I want the staff member to be comfortable talking about certain things, backstory. And I'll add this, by the time, the, the hearings that I've sat in. And I go, I pay special attention to lots of different factors, not just what's in front of me. By the time they get to the disciplinary board hearing. The majority of the students, when they look at it, they have been given all kinds of opportunities to correct themselves. And they've given, they've been given lots of, um, bre- breaks, I'll call it, um, and warnings. So by the time we see it, it's gotten to a, a pretty high level of an issue. I don't think they just come to us, and I, I know they don't, with the first or second times. I mean, they've, they've been involved, some, these students have been involved in some, an ongoing history of problems. It's unfortunate, but it just is what it is.
Alright, Dr. Edwards, anything, then, Dr. Carter, then. I, I do want us to feel like we've accomplished something on this discipline matter hugely about the future direction possibilities. But for right now, Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, I think the healthy compromise comes if you run it more like a hearing than a court trial. Um, so for example, if, if I'm the child and, and I say, the, the reason why I really beat up on Sharon is cuz I was bullied every day. I had this happen, I had this happen, I da, 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 and that's it. And then at the end, if you say to both parties, or is there any additional information that you would like to share? A building principal might say, I'm reviewing my discipline records, and there is no reported record of any bullying or anything by the parent. Or, like, there may be some information that comes across that says, because I said I was bullied. That may have happened, but if I didn't share it with the staff, or if I didn't report it, that might be something that you want to know. Um, so when we do our hearings, even when you do your staff hearings, if you notice at the end, we do, you, you speak, you speak. And then at the end, is there anything else, anyone, cuz you may have heard something either side that might trigger that. Now, there may be instances where if a student has confided in, um, an administrator about something that's in conflict with the parent. And, you know, it's like, I don't want to, that, that kind of thing, where you might not want to disclose that part of it. Or if relevant information about another student comes into play, you may not want to say in front of the student and parent. And, oh, by the way, it was also Sharon, student number two, who was in the bathroom doing whatever Sharon shouldn't have been doing, when Sharon's not their child. So I could see where that might get, um, a little conflicting. But I think just asking the opportunity for, is there anything else that either side would like me to consider, like us to consider? Before we go into disclosure, we'll give both parties an opportunity to do that.
So does that mean then both building principal, parents, student, all leave at the same time?
If that, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, the compromise between what Dr. Gupta is saying, and then also that flexibility for, I need to say, I need to add. Whether it's parent or, or principal.
We have often, I'm sorry. That's just for these two meetings, but the proposal was to see if we can explore, can we go with a different model?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm doing that. I'm doing both. So I'm doing the, here's what future exploration looks like, but here's what right now could, here's what Thursday could look like too.
Right. Dr. Gupta, we, we know about the future. We're, we're trying to make sure that if anybody had any concern about how we're doing it. In the meantime, until the change happens, and this disclosure issue with Dr. Carter, we're saying that nothing needs to be said once the student leaves. So it shouldn't be the building principal then is still able to me- to meet with the committee and say additional information. And I think that, what Dr. Edwards is saying, if we treat it more like a hearing, that both sides get an opportunity to share. They'll use their discretion on what that should look like. And then from there, it'll be up to the committee to decide what they wanna do. And whatever the building principal wants to say, they would say it in that context. Is that what I'm hearing you just?
Yeah, and if the building principal is not comfortable sharing certain information, then they don't, they're not, they don't have to disclose that at that point, if you say if there's anything additional. I think part of it is when you, you go side one, then side two, and then it's over. And then side one or side two is like, mm, I wish I had opportunity to comment on or respond to, or add the additional information from what I heard. It just gives an opportunity for folks to do this.
Okay, Dr. Carter, and then I think we can move on.
I think I forgot. Um, but I, one thing I know we have to keep in mind, and, uh, Mr. Tros stated this, is that this is not the student's first time. That's what I've learned a lot from Dr. Brown, is that these students have a pattern. So we're not seeing, this is not the first time this student has had a concern or problem. And I don't wanna put the staff at odds with the parents or bring out about any conflict. But I do wanna make sure that people are, are hearing what they are being, um, what is, what we're using to judge, make some of the judgments. If it's really significant or.
Okay, well, let's see how this works, and, and, um, we've had a good discussion on the first two items now. Now, the School Board Advisory Committee framework, um, board, we have several, uh, advisory committees. They're listed here. You see the link to the policy. And what we need to give some, uh, brief consideration to is understand that many of these advisory groups would say, you created us. We're supposed to advise in the board. What do you want from us? What do you need? So, Dr. Edwards, can you just say a little bit about that?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, you know, with the, the committees are quite different. Special Advisory often comes and at the end and talks about some of the work that they've done and shared that with you. School Health Advisory has often done the, um, the youth risk behavior survey results, as well as do some presentations. Um, with regard to that equity, Task Force brought you the volunteer adjustments in that policy going forward. And CTE, there are so many subcommittees with that bigger advisory committee. But one of the things that I heard from, um, the committees is that, uh, it would be helpful to have a charge, even if that's something annually. Or if it's primary, and of course, there may be other things that they work with. But from the board, what is it that this committee should be spending a good chunk of their time on? So that when they do get to that point in time, usually the end of the year, where they're coming back and giving the board their report or advice or advisory. Um, they, they have some direction to do that, instead of just picking things or, um, you know, they, they follow the direction of the, um, administration as well. The other thing is, most of the committees have, and CTE's a little different, but upwards to twenty folks that you appoint. Um, annually, we do appointment. We ask for volunteers, we collect it during the summer, we get a list of names, and then you, um, appoint them. But some of the committee members are saying there are people on the committee that don't show up, don't participate. They, they're in the committee in name, and it hampers them from doing work because they don't have worker bees that are, are working with them. So we have not, or to my knowledge, the board has not reviewed attendance prior to, like, reappointing or getting a new, the new list of folks for members. So those are the two things that came out of my participation in some of those committees.
Dr. Gupta?
Do we have a term limit on these committees too?
They are, um, standing advisory committees.
So if somebody's been on the committee for three, four, five, six years, do they rotate out?
I mean. They do not, cuz you annual, they can, but you annually review the list of folks and, and appoint them.
It says compensation. These committees shall serve without compensation for one-year terms and report annually to the board.
The one-year term is there, but if, if Martin Day applies each year, then he get reappointed and he's been serving on the.
We've been giving people a pass. I mean, I, no, I, let me put it this way. I'll be honest. I've been giving people a pass. In other words, what this is saying, we'll call for accountability and some type of process where the board actually re- re- adds the data, reviews it. And maybe even gets involved in helping identify potential persons to be on these committees and charge them to do something. That's what I'm hearing from this. Dr. Carter?
There are, um, chairs or leaders of the committee, and I assume they were the ones that would review them. And if someone wasn't coming, then suggest either they come, or do they need time to step away and come back at a later date? They're, they're not allowed to do that.
When you say chairs or leaders?
Chairs or lea- there's a, some, there's a, isn't there a chair or leader of the, of each department?
As in an administrative leader?
No, just.
Or on that committee?
On the committee.
Not in all of them.
And, and, and that may be something we need to look at also, Dr. Carter, to your point. And we all remember from the city side, the city man, uh, well, our deputy knows this is, is form of work. That every board and commission for the city, large in part, you gotta have like a seventy-five percent attendance, and that's reviewed. And you, and I know for a fact, if you don't meet that criteria, your name is not, you, you, yeah, that's right, you're out. So somebody needs to be compiling, and I'm looking at the clerk, the clerk looking the other direction.
We take attendance. We, we can provide attendance. We do take attendance.
Yeah, and we need to know what's what, and then we also ought to be caring, which I know we do, but it, you know, maybe assumptions.
Chair or leader.
Yeah, assumptions that this was maybe getting done somewhere else. But like, you do need a leader, hold some leader accountable, you know, the whole process. And, and even be thinking about people that could serve in these capacities. Uh, certainly, once I'm off the board, would be delighted to serve on one. Certainly, once I'm off the board, would be delighted to serve on one of them, but you know, think about that. And then the ultimate piece is, they would say to us, well, we advisory group to you, what charge? What do you want us to be focused on and do it so that you can review what they're doing? And show measurably how that's helping us achieve our board goals, our strategic plan, or whatever. Doesn't that make sense, Dr. Gupta?
Yes, it does, sir.
Okay, all right, Dr. Day.
So it seems to me what we ought to do is in the policy that establishes these boards, it should say that each board should appoint a chairperson and a secretary, that within some time period that we would need to decide on, the board would have an opportunity to issue a charge to the advisory committee for their one-year term. And at the end of their term, they should give us a report on what they've done with the charge and any other issues they choose to take up pertinent to their function, along with a record of attendance of all the members.
Fair enough.
I like that, we can move on, we may go ahead, Dr. Carter.
And they can also, they come before the board every year, so they can present that information as part of their.
Right, but, and if, I don't, I'm forgetting how the process works, Dr. Edwards, but it's presented to us for first review, second review, because if it only comes to us when it's time to vote on who the people are, it seems like to me that stuff needs to happen prior to.
So that, are you talking about the appointment or attendance? Or the report out that they do?
The whole process of review, if it's annually, and if the board then is going to vote on the members for the next year. Seems like to me there should be information that would come to the board prior to that so that they can be able to think about it and even know how to recruit people that really can help us get where we want to do. Dr., I mean, Gloria?
Just a question, is the equity task force still a functioning committee?
And that's a good question, because it has been tampered with across the years. Leave that alone.
So to your point, when you have your fall retreat, and if we can make that a little earlier. So when a board gets together for their fall retreat, one thing you may want to consider is, as you consider the work of the board, how do these committees help with the work of the board? You can possibly do a charge then. And we don't, we start soliciting names in like August and September, the first meetings are usually October. So, I mean, we can, or we can pull it back a little bit. But they usually don't present until the spring with any reports that they normally do.
So the board would have to start thinking now in some kind of way, and you're saying at that retreat maybe, what those charges would be. And I guess that would be individual thinking, passing stuff along, and having it ready for the retreat for consideration, pass on to the different groups. That makes sense. So we need a timeline on all of this. Who has the responsibility of doing all that, Dr. Edwards? I hate to put all that on you, who?
The advisory committees?
Yeah, the whole.
That's on me.
Yeah, okay, the timeline and getting something to the group to, you know, so obviously this would be effective for the next iteration of the board. But I think that's a huge. Any further discussions on this matter? Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for bringing this to us, we really appreciate that. All right, next item is, I'll discuss the FY 2223 school board goals. Now, what you're not going to see is that second sheet that I knew nothing about the last time we brought this up. Everybody got confused over. So I hope I don't see that here this time, okay? All we wanted to do is to ask the question, you should see that on whatever page it is, but it says Lynchburg City School Board Goals. And all we want to do is, is there any one that want to comment on the status, perceived status, updates, successes, challenges, and any next steps that we need? Because I'm assuming that, you know, when end of June comes, you know, we're saying, that's the end of this cycle, and then some new goals need to be established or maintained or whatever. So the one, two, three, four. Board goals that we have.
You know, these goals are there, as Dr. Edwards says, in fall retreat. This is, you know, they'll be revisited, it's only a matter of two months, and.
That's why I put status.
Yeah.
All right, any further comments on it?
Last year.
Thank you.
Okay, and we need to get in a habit of making sure that, because I'm in favor of moving on, but there are some measurable pieces that have happened with these, not necessarily expressing them tonight. But the issue is, this should be before us every meeting. Now, Dr. Edwards, typically on the agenda, you will have where this fits into the comprehensive strategic plan, or what is it that the connection is drawn to?
For our agenda items are linked to the district's strategic goals.
Yeah.
But not, not.
So that's what I'm asking. So it appears to me that this easily becomes a document that we can always, and Dr. Gupta, your point is well taken, so I'm not arguing that point at all, where we can always say, oh, we don't have two more months left. Point is that it seems like to me, everything on the agenda needs to also address. I'm hoping this embraces the strategic piece, but this part, you see? Because otherwise, what we're having here, it becomes a waste of time if in fact, we're not holding ourselves accountable, whatever that's going to be going forward. Does that, does that make sense?
It does, and I guess just for us on the admin side, because these are board goals. So it's board, this is board work, not combined, although we're working with you. So things like develop a competitive comprehensive.
Compensation.
Compensation plan, sorry.
Yeah.
We've done that with 1550, and we've done that with the help of finance and bringing it to the board.
So at some point, somehow, that would be linked maybe some kind of way to the item that in discussing this, this is addressing.
Right.
So-and-so in our board goals.
But if I look at B, under 2B, universal pre-K.
Yeah, what have we done on there?
And then what, what is it that the board wants to do with that is what I don't.
Good question, so let's take one minute on that. Somebody tell me, what does it look like to measure whatever board goals are in front of the board?
So Dr. Brennan and I met, and we talked about universal pre-K. We talked about the need to really push that goal back until after we figure out facility study. Because there's no need to really have this lengthy conversation about universal pre-K. We don't have the structure for it, right? Not only the instruction, but the actual building itself, the space, right? So we talked a lot about just kind of table in that until we can kind of figure out where we're going with facilities. And then we can kind of revisit that. So if everybody's comfortable with taking that goal off the table, we can do that. So that way, we don't, that's not a goal that's hindering us from moving forward, so.
One thing we could do that may be helpful is, and I agree, that's a, that sounds like a prudent approach, although the rate we're going, it could be a while. What it, do, is it, is there a way to estimate like the cost per student in our pre-K program so that we can then scale that up to what it would cost to do every three and four, I guess, four-year-old, three and four-year-old in Lynchburg?
Possibly estimate it based on staffing and just the silly space. Space would be the big thing.
Exactly, but even just in terms of staffing and materials and. Because, you know, as part of that planning process.
Does, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Does, does the Hutcherson Center have a budget of its own? So there's the numbers that you want. We take their bottom line and we divide it by the number of students.
Well, they serve both three, four, but also special needs kids in there as well, so.
Okay, so we divide it by the number of students, and then we've averaged the cost per student across K through whatever grade is included.
That's unreasonable.
That's a simple.
I mean, I don't want to do a nonsense stat, but just to, I mean, how many pre-K? What is our pre-K enrollment again, any idea? Two fifty.
So you have Hutcherson, and then you have nine pre-K classes in the K-12 buildings.
All right, Dr. Gupta.
I had two suggestions. Number one is the retreat, we do one in beginning of the academic year and one right after Christmas, because if you do it in May, June, July, half of the stations are gone by, and it's not worth it, because you know the way our structure works. That's number one. Number two, we need to articulate a way to eliminate information vacuum. We meet mayor and vice mayor each month, each week, how often do we meet? Each month. I have not heard a single word, what happened in those meetings, you know? I've been on this board for, God knows, four, five years, I've never heard from any, and I'm not blaming you guys. What I'm saying is.
Your point is valid.
It's just elite group goes and meets, a little soldier sits there, and he can hear from the grape wine, but have no information what happened there. And I'm not looking for another meeting to explain that, but there has to be a way to remove that. Like the conversation sidebar, vice chair meets with the board member about universal K. We met with the MGT guy, right? We were asking him for the universal pre-K. So if I'm going out there, holding my banner, saying, "Universal PK, universal pre-K", and the suggestion has been, let's put it on the table, then I got to know that. You see what I'm saying, otherwise I'd look like a fool. So that information vacuum needs to go, must go, that should be number one.
Record that, and clerk, information vacuum, I would tend to agree with that.
If you were going to write that, just to take the universal pre-K as an example, if you were going to write this as a real clear objective, you'd have to be more specific about desired outcomes and.
Right.
Timelines or milestones to hit. So one appropriate one right now would be to get an estimate of what the required capacity would be to do universal pre-K in a new building if one were done.
Yeah.
And entertain scenarios of continuing the existing capacity that we have at Hutcherson and that we've established in these other schools, or given what we've, what we've learned from our pilot, more or less pilot programs. Are there different ways we would configure that that would impact the new facility? And what cost does that have? So have all those specs and just, you know, by a certain date, have these, have this information available for the consultant and make it clear that this is a priority, and we want it included in all their, in their recommendations.
Better do that quickly.
And then the next thing would be, you know, by such and such a date, you know, at least, yeah, all, all three and four-year-olds who apply for a seat in pre-K at LCS will have one available. And maybe also the way you could write that is, we will gear up over time, because you may not be able to do it all at once. You may also include in some of those, apply for grants, or if there are certain grant areas that we know that apply to this, what would that look like? And what is the timeline for those? So specific activities that have to be done in a certain order by a certain time to achieve a certain amount or a certain outcome, but they have to be very clear. Because obviously, just saying, "Universal pre-K," what does that mean? That doesn't really specify anything.
Okay, all right, so I, I think that, that we've had some conversation about that around timing with retreats. Clearly, at least on these four board goals, for something like 3D, even though we're moving into the next year, annual adopt a code of conduct. And remember, that will happen each year at reord meeting. And so you just can say in the parentheses, "That, that may not be an ongoing goal, I don't know, maybe it will." And then also, don't forget that there are two other sheets here about vision, and it is our responsibility to look at vision. Is that something we're talking about tonight as well?
Rush, that, you talking about strategic plan, that's next.
Next, next, yeah, okay. So anyway, remember, the board sets vision, and then the administration seeks to carry out that vision. Yes, Dr.?
Regarding item four.
Yep.
On the board goals.
Yep.
I really do think we need to have a regular place on the city council agenda. Talk about developments, programs, advocate, talk about the value of certain positions, present research that our data analyst has, that's probably an administrator that they think we don't need. I think it's essential, of course, I'm biased. But in just the short time that Chuck's been in that position and the data he's presented and the work he's done to collaborate with Dr. Coleman, I think's been really useful and insightful and will help us get to where we want to do.
We need to use that better, yeah.
So I think if we're having that conversation, secondly, I think those conversations should be engaged in having a partnership with them, so they own some of what we do. A lot of K-12 education is for career development and business development and all that, and, you know, what are they trying to do to generate business and attract businesses to the area? And I'm not, I know that's not totally under their purview, because it's the regional business alliance. But how are they going to partner with us to help make that happen so that they can be stakeholders? And see that as an objective? And work collaboratively as a partnership. It feels like we're adversaries, and that's really an uncomfortable way to be.
Now, make sure you have that down. I think we're ready to move on to the next item now, but I do appreciate Dr. Gupta's statement about information vacuum, you mentioning about being on the agenda. I do want to make a brief statement that I think we did approach the manager about being on the agenda, and that was rejected. Number two, sometimes some of the things that happen in those meetings going forward are somewhat embarrassing, such as people not attending the meetings. And I have tried not to air out that kind of situation, but, yeah.
The council meetings?
I'm just saying, the reality is that sometimes people don't show up to the meeting. The mayor, vice mayor, chair, vice chair meeting, sometimes the vice mayor doesn't show. And so, and then if we have advanced some items and they have been rejected.
And that, that last goal, that's for us to show up and to present, not so much administration.
All right, so.
We'll just have to get on as a.
Public comment. Yeah, and that's what we were doing.
And deny you from public comment.
All right, so good talk. Everybody, keep reviewing those, let's do the best we can for the next two months. And then to Dr. Gupta's point, just take things higher and higher going forward. All right, next item on our agenda is the initial plans. And this is just initial, we understand you got, we understand all that. But Dr. Edwards, if you could take that for us.
Sure, so your first board goal, your board goal, back to the last one, is develop a timeline and process for developing the new five-year strategic plan. Current plan's going to expire in 2024, so next year, we'll do a stated division in October of this fall. So you'll have information regarding where we are and all the things that we've accomplished, what we didn't accomplish, where's growth, and so on, so you can be working towards the next plan. You have the one-pager, and I just want to kind of go over what we did last time, what was the board's role in 2019 when we did this, and then how we got from this one-page or two multi-page document. But this is from 2019, so the vision and the mission statement was what it was during that time. You know, we've added in beyond to our mission statement now. But the board's big role in this was to develop the color-coded spots, the goals. So the language, the wording, goal one, student growth and development and success. Goal two, goal three, and goal four were all what the board worked together and said, what are, what are our priorities, big picture priorities, what do we want from that? You all came up with that language. And with assistance, while with the administrative team, we crafted a rationale for each goal. And then, of course, we were working very closely with the equity task force at that time, so we talked about. So we talked about something called equity habits, which are things that we want people to do naturally in the, in the eyes of equity. They shouldn't be thinking about just like any good habits that you have. So this is where we stand right now. Now we gotta go back and do it again for 2024, um, for the next five-year plan. But in our big strategic plan, you will also notice that underneath that, we had a whole bunch of objectives, like probably way too many for a division to accomplish in any effective and highly efficient manner. But we're moving forward with a lot of those. So one of the suggestions, as you look at the goals, um, is to think through the lens. And this is also coming from our training, speaking of information vacuum. Our training that we have at the V SBA fiscal cohort training. So we had training number three on Monday. But everything is done through the lens of start with students. So you start with students, you develop whatever your goals are for your students. And then from there, you say, okay, the people who are working with the students, what goals do we have for the people so that they can achieve the goals for the students? Then the community that's helping the students and families that are helping the students, what goals can we work, what objectives and things can we work with them so that they can help the students? And then, of course, does our fiscal plan match what we're saying about students? Much similar to the conversation, we talk about student achievement, but we don't have a student achievement committee. So when you look at how you're allocating resources, are you prioritizing resources in your five-year plan to meet the goals that you've determined for your students? But the big work starts with you all. And once you all were done crafting what I call the color-coded sections, then we got to work with you on the substance section. So I'm trying to give advance notice that we're going to have to get together, um, probably very soon, once we, once we get to July and, and installation, to start that process.
So what has been the history before 2019? So I see all these goals are important, and still a lot of work needs to be done in each of those four areas. So what has been the trend before? Were there were the goals in 2015, or were they changed and completely turned upside down? Could you provide some historical content?
Sure. If you go on our website, you'll see something called the, what is it, comprehensive plan? So it was the ABCs, I think is what, what was, what we called it. So there were objectives for academics, behavior, and culture and climate. And they were more like seventy percent of the students will pass this, or we'll see a reduction of ten percent in dropout rate, or we'll see satisfaction go up. But that was what you had. That was your plan. You, you did not have a comprehensive strategic plan prior to, at least I couldn't find one. Okay. So we did the, we did the first one. You know, I came in 2018, and in January 2019, after you all done work and we worked with the community to get, because there's a big community piece of this, then we developed the first one, first iteration. So 2.0 is gonna be better than 1.0.
I don't know. People know you are a national expert in strategic planning, so.
About national, but.
So basically, you just want the board to be aware of this, Dr. Edwards. Is that correct?
Yes, but this board is gonna have to think through, what does the work look like when we're getting together to do these goals? Because we did take some time, just us. Actually, I think Susan was the chair. She went with us on training. We had been trained by Cambridge, um, and then came back and did small group work and large group work. So as we're looking at calendars and what next year it looks like in the work, how are we gonna manage this? And what is the timeline so that when we get to June of next, next school year, we're ready with rolling this out? But what, the work of the board has to be upfront, so that then the work of administration, working with the community comes next. So that's a process that many of you are brand new, because you weren't here when we did the first plan. So it's an opportunity to create new, um, but it's also an opportunity to, to get that direction set. And I'm gonna just turn to Dr. Waterka too, just because he's my co-partner in strategic planning. He's done a lot of work with MGT and setting out those guidelines. And did I miss anything? You wanna add anything?
No, I think we just, um, start figuring out what we wanna do.
Yeah. So, so to bring that kinda big, if you think five years, like you guys have a board goal for universal pre-K, but is that a strategic planning goal for universal pre-K? When I think of board goals, I think of the work that you do as board members, like the advocacy piece, the code of conduct piece, the, we're gonna, um, review data and ask for data, or whatever that work is. But universal pre-K, to me, over a longer period of time, seems like a big goal, if that's the direction that the board may want to, to go. So when you think about it in that term, so if we just took universal pre-K, because Kim had a lot of good stuff. So what does that look for staffing? What does that look for facilities, playgrounds, toilets, you know, little, little people stuff? Training, right? And then, then just developmentally, what does, what does behavioral support, mental support, all of that? So if you develop a goal, you start with what you want and then work it out. And how does that look in the community? Are the community partners, is there parent training, like what? And that's just universal pre-K in a heartbeat. So that's the kinda thinking that I, we need to get to.
So in these two months we have, how can we be helpful with this piece?
To get started. You guys got the hard work. You, you've gotta kinda think through, I would say, start with students. Right? So don't, and this one, we did a little differently. This was our first one, so we were, we were everywhere. So we had four big goals that didn't always overlap, which meant the work was, was kinda, kinda big. But in, in the work that we've been doing with the fiscal governance, even when you do your budget, it was all about instruction. Where we start and what are supports for tier one classrooms, tier two, support, tier three, individual support. So when you start, when, what I need for this board to be thinking about are, what are those goals that are starting, generating with students, student body, expectations for students, outcomes for students that will guide the work for the next five years? And then we can build out from there.
So we submit those thoughts to you?
Well, that depends on what kinda process you want. So if we do it as a board as a whole, that means we're taking, we're either, go, well, then maywork session, forget it, because we've got the, um, student thing. Or we can say, we're gonna do mini-retreats and do some work that way, that is solely to this work. But if you wanna get everybody's voice, and if you think it's important for cross-dialog, or do you just want everybody's suggestions? Then we try to put it together. So I, I, I don't wanna tell you what to do, because I want this board to, to think about. What, what is the process that you would like to have happen?
Dr. Gupta?
You know, I'm in agreement with these four goals, but my problem is, we are in a, for lack of word, a lame duck session right now. So in two months, the board may change. So if you're setting up priorities, it doesn't make sense. Is there an urgency to set these goals?
No, I'm not saying, give me the goals before two months. I'm saying, when July hits, can this board, if it's six of you that are here, if it's eight of you that are here, and we know we're gonna have at least one new person with Dr. Coleman serving nine years, are we ready to hit the ground running with the work, because we have a framework for how we're gonna operate? Or are we gonna spend three months trying to figure out, how are we gonna meet? When are we gonna meet? Are we gonna do it in committee? I think the decisions about how can be made now, so that when board, 2024 board gets together, that we can just say, this is where we're going. Now we need voice in it.
Because see, buy-in from each person is important for goals to be successful, right?
Right.
And, uh, so as you said, the, the, the faces are there, may not be there. So is it too premature to set these up, assuming that there'll be a buy-in there?
I think I would liken it to, like, you're gonna get a new principal, some new teachers and everything like that. Do you wait till the teachers and everybody get here to decide, well, what's the schedule look like? How are we gonna meet? Are we gonna have PLCs? Are we gonna do that? Or do you have that structure and say, now that I have some structure, I wanna hear from the vo, I wanna be, we didn't make a decision about the substance. We just made a decision about the process, the framework. And there's some structure there that says, we're ready to go and have these productive conversations. I just want the structure. I don't want you telling me what the goal is. I would like this board to be able to say, this is something that we wanna do as a retreat, and we'd like to have, you know, a, a mini-retreat, or we'd like a four-hour, a two-hour, we want this to be part of every board meeting, like however you, the board feels.
If I remember right, last time, it was a retreat you had at one of the colleges. We met for half a day or more than a day, and you had all those book.
Yeah, all the stuff I like.
On, on the walls to do it. So, and that format worked well.
So that's what we can go ahead and. So we can go ahead and get that structure and set up.
Dr. Sena, then Dr. Day.
I suggest we, um, we set a goal for when we'd like to have much of this ironed out. Maybe with the finer details left to Dr. Edwards and her staff in terms of how things will be achieved. But establish a timeline by which we want to have pretty much done what we did at that retreat. And then moving backwards, what do we need to do to leave up, up to it? For one thing, the onboarding process for at least one, if not possibly three new board members, will have to prioritize, here's, here's our past strategic plan. Here's our calendar for updating it. You need to familiarize yourself with all this, because this is common and this is what we're gonna do. So that they are ready to ramp up for that, because we really have to start working on this beginning in August at the latest, and, you know, perhaps have it hammered out by end of October, early in the year. I mean, what were you, what did you have in mind?
Yes, to hammer it out early in October, because then we have to take over and start doing the work. Now, some of this will come when you get a report out from MGT. A lot of that, like, what are we thinking about kids programming, where we should be going? Some of that will be guided by their work, so you'll have some of that. And anybody who's thinking about being a school board member, hopefully, they are not suffering from information vacuum. They should be watching, if that's what they wanna do. They should be watching and keeping up, like, what do I need to know so that I can get, get there? So yes, I would love to be able to do that by October.
If there's no objection, if there is objection, please state it, that the clerk will work with, uh, us and Dr. Edwards in identifying a few hours where we can go with the specific responsibility of process, not details to process. And do that somewhere, I guess, within May, June.
So define process, if you may, please.
Put some dates on the calendar.
So this is the calendar. That's what you meant? So we, basically, we need a date for a retreat in the fall, an early retreat, for a whole board to meet and then start this process.
And you might decide.
Replica what we did last time.
Yes, and you may decide, like, after we get to here. So we'll get to a point where these, this is the essence of what we want for our goals. And I'm telling you, we, I, y'all may not remember, but I remember getting so many iterations of this goal, because you were submitting them individually, so I kept editing them. But then what Kim may have given me, what Sharon may have given me, that wasn't what, and then it kept, and it just went back and back. So do you want to have a process that says, when we get the essence, you know, Sharon and Gloria are the two that'll?
I'm fine with whatever you.
Or two board members, not necessarily Sharon and Gloria, but just two board members will help with the word-smapping.
I'll tell you my frustration. Goal number one, I thought I was excited, achievement gap will be closed, right? Number two was, we'll pay market salaries to our teachers and staff. So I can go, you know what I'm saying, the implementation, not internal, there are external constraints beyond our control. So, um, I think we need to talk about, we need to be realistic, or do we just do lofty goals? Where we know what percentage we'll be able to achieve and, because I want to be a rich guy, but I'm poor. I cannot be rich.
That is not true, and we will. Dr. Sena, what I wanna make sure for you, Dr. Sena, I wanna make sure, because however we wanna do this is fine. Now, fall is August, September. Are you, is that what you want? Because that's fine. Or you want this group to convene May, June, to do some things, to have ready so that comes you?
We can, we can craft a, a potential thing and give it to you.
Are you saying, you understand that a too? I think he still doesn't see that. I want you to, I need to explain it to him. I think he's wanting to wait and do anything until fall. I hear you saying, get some things in order for the group that will come in July to go and execute the details of that. So we, we not on the same page, I don't think, right now.
So I think we are. I think what he's talking about is the substance of the plan.
Right.
She's talking about the structure, the scaffolding, what holds it together, what's the framework.
That's right.
And if I think about it, the way we do assessment plans for program, we have a, and I'm not suggesting we adopt this, but it gives a framework for people. So you, it's a five-column system. You, you state a goal, and then you state desired outcomes. And then you, what are your measures? And what are your criteria for success? So is it going to be, you know, we can, and then, and we can leave those things, so we can set it up sort of in a framework like that. And then we can also, in the meantime, those of us who've been on the board now, and you're all gonna be senior members, actually, what are the data available? So maybe we could have a, a quick meeting with Chuck, or have, be prior to set this up of, what are all the data elements that we have access to, and how might we best use them? So that then we can establish, these are, these are measures. So by X and at such a date, we wanna have pass rates of this much, or we wanna see growth of this much. Or, you know, really concrete kind of things that are, that are aspirational, but achievable, not like forty-five percent in one year.
To me, instead of looking into the future, we should spend the time looking back, saying, where, what did we miss? Why did we miss?
Yeah.
Sort of a.
After-action review.
Creating a blueprint for the future, not knowing who will be occupying that home. You may go for three-bedroom, and the person may like to have open floor plan. You see what I'm saying?
We're not, we're not trying to create a blueprint. What we're doing is just, the same way that when I knew that, when we got a new board a couple times, and I was like, oh, everybody's been, everybody's going to be reappointed, or we're gonna have less turnover. What I planned in terms of carving out time for a board orientation looked different than, we have three new board members. We need to break this up from one eight-hour day of whatever we used to do to certain Thursdays, or however we did it when we onboarded you guys and rotated it. But even though we weren't sure exactly of all of the content, we were sure of the time and how. And we knew we could orchestrate, like, all right, we're gonna meet, we're gonna do this, we're gonna, and we reached out to you all early enough so that you knew, like, these are the, the dates, and you could be prepared, instead of waiting till you get on board and then saying, hey, can we come together? Can I do a doodle poll? Can I do this? The reason why I'm bringing it up is, it is a lot of talk and work. And I'm going to tell you that if, if we sit and say, we'll just do it during our work sessions and during our board meetings, it's not gonna happen. So I need to carve time ahead of time to say, there may be, it may be, you know, a lot in the beginning, then a little bit of break, get the community involved and that kinda stuff. But I just need to know where you all are as to, yes, let's go ahead and do that and carve that time.
Dr. Waterka, did you wanna add anything?
No, I think she said.
She said it. Okay, Dr. Sena.
An exercise we could do, it'd be more difficult for the newer members of the board who weren't in on all these conversations. But for those of us who were part of developing that strategic plan, go through it, item by item. Give it a grade and say, why? What happened? COVID happened, or this happened, or it wasn't funded, or we just didn't focus enough on it. We didn't have the right metrics. And then I, I'd be glad to tally all that, just in a, in a similar manner to how we, not to the same specificity maybe, in the same manner that we collect data on superintendent evaluation and tally it all up. That could be a good after-action review to, to, to look at. This is what we said we were gonna do. Did it happen? Yes, no, why not? Is that plausible?
But we will do that for you in the fall. That, part of what we wanna do is go through every goal, every director has a name associated. And now, like, we're at the end. Now, for example, you have pre-K goals in there. You've already met them. You met them years ago, like when we first did the plan. So just reporting back on that is like, oh, we did do the pre-K thing. We did do, we did reinstate pay tables. We did, like, some of this is already done, and some of it has not been achieved, and that's the stuff that we wanna share in October.
Where I wanna do this, I wanna, Dr. Gupta's burning, Dr. Day, and then Dr. Carter. Then I think we need to pull this together for decision, and then we can move on to our last two items. All right, in the order I just mentioned.
I just wanted to make a statement. You know, sometimes we use these words. For those of you who are new to the school board, I'm telling you this. To me, it, it sounds like. To me, it sounds like they're a bunch of dumb people, they just showed up out of the blue. And some of them have more experience than I. Five years I have not learned anything. So, you know, everybody has equal intelligence. There's no new or old. You don't get medals for each years on the school board and saying, I got medal number one, two, three, four, five. Guess what? I got five medals. And you don't have Dr. Day, just, how many medals you got? Just one. So, that should be the goal going forward, one of those.
Alright, Dr. Day.
So, what you're advising us to do at this point is just some initial planning about the structure, the organization of our discussions that we will use for this first phase. So, when the board went through this previously, was there any kind of written document that is answering those questions that you're asking us to answer? I'm just asking, it would help me to see an example of the kind of thing you're asking us to formulate, if one exists. I'm not asking you to go write something.
So, to be transparent, when the board went through the strategic plan the first time, because I got hired and then we were right in the middle and I'm, and then I'm like, we don't, we don't have a plan, we need a plan. I just accelerated stuff. So I pretty much.
Okay.
Got University of Lynchburg, kinda went through, this is what we're doing, come on, this, how are we gonna do it? We're going to training, this is what we're gonna, blah, 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 and you followed along. Um, and then there was a lot of board participation on the substance. But as far as how we got there rather quickly, you all were just along for the ride.
So you pretty much just, because everything you knew.
Yeah.
You just said, okay, guys, we're gonna do it this way this time. Maybe next time around we'll be more deliberate.
That's why we're at next time around. And I'm like, normally I sit with a board and some boards will say, look, we want an ad hoc committee that's responsible for the planning of all of that. And we're picking whomever, whomever. Some boards are like, just go ahead and do it and tell us what you're gonna do. I mean, it depends on, on the board and how they want to. Or, and I'm just talking about the structure, not the substance of it.
Alright, Dr. Carter.
I think we can at least go ahead and do the dates, so that someone, the new people or person coming in will already have those dates and know that. Because I know in previous times we've tried to get dates and people hold out. So if dates are known ahead of time, then they're aware that these, we already have dates in place.
Yeah.
But we do need to go ahead and structure the dates.
And of course, with new people, I don't know what their dates would be as such, but that's a good point. I think what I hear the superintendent saying, that there's a need for a deliberative phase in which she understands, in which this group can come and complete that, which will have nothing to do with substance. So that when it's time for the new group, whoever that is, to move forward, they'll have that part in place in which they can proceed. Is there anyone that is, is against that? And if you are speaking now, and there's eight of us here, and then we can move on. So, right now I heard anybody, so I assume we're going on. If I don't want to say that we don't need to do this deliberative piece that Dr. Edwards is suggesting that she feels will help with the overall process going forward in the fall.
So process, what I'm hearing from you is about a timeline and the dates for those events to occur. Not the substance, like goal one should be this or goal one.
That's what the.
So that's the clerk to just decide when the retreat will be?
Well, thank you, Dr. Gupta. So if there's, if there's nobody that has a pro. See, I've been very deliberative that I want us to be a team. So, Madam Clerk, if you could.
Must be dictated and tell us when the retreat usually will show up.
Get that together with the superintendent.
You are one of eight, let me just say. I'm, I'm going back to my funnel. I heard you say just tell us what to do, but you are one of eight.
Alright, so anybody, so we'll be getting that. So we'll be trying to carve out a few hours between May and June to do that part, and I think that this is good. Thank you again for your excellent leadership, Dr. Edwards, on that. Alright, now, we're going to have a review of the timeline, communication, and next steps for the facility study. And between Dr. Edwards and Dr. Water, could you proceed with that?
Okay. So, you know, we did at the joint meeting, Dr. Water and, wait, what's his last name? White, okay, I thought it was White. So we used the first names, like, what is his last name? He did a great job of presenting the facility study, next steps. And MGT has come in and spoken with, I think, all of you have had an opportunity as well as city officials. So now we wanna just keep that conversation going, so we do not have an information vacuum and talk about what's coming up next. Um, and for the public, there is a draft document that is not currently in Board Docs, but I will add it to Board Docs, so that the public has access to that plan as well. Now, take it away with you.
Yes ma'am. So, on your, your executive content that the public can't see, there is a timeline on the next steps of communication that I just wanted to review with you. And I do need your feedback. And again, we'll, we'll publish this. We wanted to get your feedback on it before we did that. So, there's a couple of components. There's a phase one and a phase two of the next step. Um, this is some, this is the work Mr. White and I did along with MGT to, to work through this. I, I do wanna say that the document you see here is Austin Journey's work, trying to take all my ideas and put them. So he did a great job.
Executive content under the agenda item.
Just scroll down a little bit.
It's what's titled LCS Facilities Master Plan Feedback.
That's right.
Oh, master.
So, next week, we'll have a survey launch. So that will be a survey that, survey that goes out to the public. It'll be open for a month. We'll do a big social media push as well as messaging out to our media partners as well, as well as School Messenger, obviously press release, and we'll put some flyers around town, the QR code to try to get people to, to join that. Those are similar kinds of questions that you may have been asked in the, in the meeting with MGT. And so thank you for, for doing that. A couple of days after that, there will be a video that's released with LCS leadership, just encouraging people to, to fill that out and explained what we're trying to do. Followed by the first week of May, several community feedback sessions. We tried to hit schools that were not in, not places we went for the community conversations last year, just to spread it out a little bit. Um, and so that'll be those sort of structured conversations. Again, that survey's still available for people to come and be a part of the conversation at several opportunities. And then we'll, we'll get out on School Messenger and social media reminders. So that'll be the feedback sessions. Again, that'll close, the, the big survey will close in, in May. Will allow the MGT to use that information to craft their responses. Um, and then they will turn around and hopefully very quickly, well, not very quickly, but within a couple of weeks, be able to provide those three to five recommendations or options for recommendation as we go along. When that occurs, what's going to be important to us is that we have to recognize that there will, there will be some very challenging, potentially some very challenging conversations to be had. We wanna first, of course, inform you and City Council of that. But very quickly after that, we want to make sure we inform the LCS staff that may or may not be affected by those potential recommendations. So we'd like to have a Zoom webinar with them. One thing that is on our minds a little bit is that, sort of just right after school ends and those sorts of things, but we're, our timing is sort of our timing. So, but, there is that, right? Um, so anyway, we are worried about making sure that we are getting that information out to LCS staff first. Um, and then very shortly after that, we, we will publish that. We'll then have open houses where we have opportunities for the public to come and give feedback. Not so much in terms of like a big public meeting, but in terms of there will be opportunities at various tables just to talk with school personnel and city person about some of the options in more of a sort of conversational perspective, allow people to give feedback and that sort of thing. There will also be a second survey after the, the options go out, an opportunity for the public to comment on that. We'll gather all that information up and put it together for you, so that you'll have it a couple of weeks before our meeting then. That'll occur on August eighth. Um, so you'll have that as a joint meeting with City Council. You'll have, again, two phases of this and, and hopefully as many opportunities as we possibly can for folks to give their feedback, not only on what the recommendations should be, but also the potential options, their, their feedback on them. You know, these are big conversations, these are long, this is something we've been trying to get to for a long time. Uh, and we don't wanna rush the process, but we also wanna be intentional about moving the process forward. Um, but I think there's sort of several months of opportunities for people to give feedback on those are our next steps.
Where, Dr. Gupta?
August eighth calendar has been cleared with the City Council?
So we, we gave that information when we met last with them.
So it's green light from there?
The joint meeting.
Joint meeting. And timing is four o'clock same time?
Probably four o'clock.
August eighth.
Alright.
Um, okay, so one bit of feedback is when the consultant is back in town, they, in May, they'll be doing, of course, the community feedback sessions. Those are in the evening. But during the daytime, we'd like for them to meet with community groups that may have impacts on that. And what I need from you is your feedback on who those community groups should be. Um, and you can either tell me tonight or you can, you can email me later this, this week and kinda let you, you know. Some of the, the groups that I had kinda brainstormed were certainly the Lynchburg Chapter, the NAACP, our Business Alliance and Economic Development Group, of course, our LEA, I wanna involve them as well. The LGBTQ organizations that come and speak with us, Poverty Progress Group, our Bridges of Progress Group, and some others as well. So, if you have thoughts about who, who we should talk to, please tell me and we can hopefully schedule a time for that opportunity.
Have you met with Dr. Farmer, Brenda?
I have not.
Yeah, she, she's the new president of.
So that needs to happen because that's where the bridge is. Cause I was talking to somebody today, you know, she, she is the president of NAACP. And we should be, have a active collaboration with her, beyond politicians.
Totally agree.
So, so if you could just think on that a little bit, and you can either tell me tonight or you can tell me another time, what groups do you think that we should specifically reach out to? Um, and then we, we will do that and do our very best to have a conversation with them.
Yeah, I, I, I hope you can get in front of, you know, some type of collaborative ministerial group. Because those are gonna be major stakeholders in terms of the liberated space facilities that we have as well to assist in our ongoing efforts.
Can you, can you help me?
I can give you, I surely can. Alright, anything else on this? I think this is exciting. It's a great work and you are part of this great work. Uh, so we've got the next steps and everything on that. Alright, thank you, Dr. Water. Good work there and you have all that in your executive content to continue to mill over.
And as, I'm sorry, so we'll publish that.
I just did.
Okay, great.
Okay, good. Alright, great, great. Thank you, Doc. Alright, we have reached the last item of this retreat, if I haven't skipped over anything, which I can do sometimes. And we wanna discuss a matter that Dr. Day would like to provide a brief overview concerning the School Board Member Alliance. Dr. Day?
Thank you. So, Virginia Code requires us as board members to participate annually in professional development activities. We have typically received that professional development through Virginia School Board Association and the various trainings they provide. There are membership fee for VSB A is for the whole board. The way VSB works, as I understand it, is boards join, individuals don't. Boards join. And typically, the fees for the, for the individual events that each of us may or may not choose to participate in are covered by the budget that we have for that matter. Now, a new organization has recently been formed in Virginia that also provides professional development for school board members, and that's the School Board Member Alliance of Virginia. The abbreviation is SBMA. I have joined the SBMA and I asked that my membership fee, which was $250, be covered by the board. And Dr. Coleman felt that the board ought to discuss that before going ahead with reimbursing me for my fee. So what I wanna do is try to give you a little bit of a summary of what the SBMA is. Uh, there was a, a one-page PDF that was attached to our agenda that was produced by the SBMA as a introduction to what it is. It's listed on the VDOE website as an educational organization, just the same as VSB A is. And it provides professional development for school board members on many aspects of our duties, some of which are similar to the kinds of things that VSB A provides. Responsibilities of us as board members, as distinct from the responsibilities of superintendents. Uh, the use of assessment data, legal issues, Title IX, First Amendment issues, policy development issues, updates on educated, education-related legislation, academic standards, budget formulation and analysis, mental health issues and policies. So it sounds pretty similar to VSB A in, in that list of topics, but there are some ways that it's different. For one, membership is by individual, not by full board. And at present, it's much smaller. Probably, I'm guessing the membership now is on the order of a hundred people, maybe a little bit more at this point. But it is much smaller, which means, at least from my perspective, that it's more responsive to individual questions and concerns. And one of their goals is to provide sort of networking and interaction among individual board members. You know, if we're facing an issue here and I wanna know how somebody in Chesterfield, how their board handled it, I can, I can communicate through SBMA with somebody there, not talking to their whole board, but just talking to an individual who might have a perspective similar to mine. I attended both the VSB A convention in Williamsburg, as most of us did, as well as a recent SBMA event in Richmond. And I found the SBMA event more helpful in the regard of that networking opportunity. I was able to con, to talk directly with board members from several different school districts, both at this event I intended, but through their, their communication facilities for board members. The VSB A has a long list of poly, policy positions that it advocates. Most of us may not have read them all. We did discuss some of them that were up for consideration at the VSB A convention. And we talked about some of them there. Uh, to my knowledge, this new organization does not, it has a handful of policy positions, which you'll find on the PDF document that I shared with you. But it doesn't organize any sort of, I guess I'd call it lobbying effort like the Capitol Conference that the VSB A organized. And then, to be candid, the SBMA members are probably generally conservative in their outlook on a lot of issues and are attracted to the SBMA because it provides the opportunity to discuss things with like-minded board members from across the state. So when I, when I talked to Dr. Coleman about my desire to have my membership in this covered, similar to the way our board membership is covered by board funds, the concern that you raised, as I understood it, was that in the past, the board has not paid for individual memberships. We paid for the full board membership, which is the way that the SBMA, or the VSB operates. And of course, that's true, but we also do cover the individual fees that each of us, that are associated with each of the VSB A events that each of us choose to participate in. Those fees range from on the order of $175 for the superintendent evaluation training to $365 for the annual convention. So I'm not, I'm not questioning the validity or value of those VSB A events. I'm just pointing out that the fees that are covered by our participation in VSB A events are, to a significant extent, governed by our individual selections. So the immediate issue before us, Dr. Coleman wanted the issue of whether the board should cover my or anyone else's membership fee in the SBMA to be discussed by the board as a whole. And I think connected to this, more broadly, the board ought to consider its oversight responsibilities for professional development within the entire district. There is a section of the Virginia. Uh, there is a section of the Virginia Code that says, "Each local school board shall annually review its professional development program for quality, effectiveness, participation by instructional personnel and relevancy to the instructional needs of teachers and the academic achievement and needs of the students in the school division." So if we have done that, I'm not aware that we have. So I'm suggesting that this is maybe another aspect of this that, that the board needs to take up in the future, namely the review of the professional development, um, training that we are providing, uh, across the district. But again, the immediate issue before us is whether you think it's appropriate for the board to cover my two hundred and fifty-dollar membership fee for the S B M A.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Day, for bringing this up. And, uh, members of the board have always tried to be very transparent and fair in my role. In fact, if you will review my talking time prior to becoming vice chair and chair, you would be surprised how little I say compared to what I was saying, because I want to be that person that brings everybody together and for each person to be heard. Had I made this decision singularly, I would have said no. And I didn't think that that would be right for me to do that, that this is something new and fresh, and it should come to the entire board for discussion. And so the floor is open for discussion at this time. Uh, Dr. Carter?
We do, um, look at and evaluate, um, the professional development and provide opportunities for members to attend as many webinars and conferences and things like that. But my question is, will this open the door for school board members to join various associations? Right now, like you said, that group is, uh, a single. And I know, um, we all got off of the school board, National School Board Association. But if that becomes an individual, and they may even do that, open it up to individuals, then they'll open the door for anyone to just join. So, uh, and then the, it says it's nonpartisan, but it's very partisan. The same language, public, they're going to talk about public and private. And I joined to be the advocate for the public schools. And they talk mainly about parent choice, and we even have the, uh, Speaker of the House, who has a hundred percent of voting conservatively, for all votes, uh, receiving award for that, has one of the endorsers of that. And in two years, if that changes, if our governor, the political partner governor changes, then there may be a different party for someone to join and as an individual. So I would have to say, no. That it's great if you want to do that as an individual, but that could be, um, the monies or what.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Gupta?
This is, I've said before, this is a public enterprise. This is not my dollar or Mr. Trust's dollar or Dr. Day's dollar. And, uh, we cannot pu- pick and choose that his political views align with mine and his doesn't. So I'm going to stop, uh, paying him money. So we're basically crossing the line there. If he wants to join it, so be it. Uh, to give you about S B M A, Ryan Mini reached out to me. I didn't join the organization. But he did help me with this Roanoke County, uh, review team material. He did send me that. And he linked me to that lady, and he was very helpful in achieving that. And he, he didn't give it to his member, but he gave it to a non-member. And, but to me, uh, freedom of choice is the main thing in our country, you know? If he wants to choose, so be it. He's not doing anything wrong. Why, why are we stopping it? Just because we may have interest in one organization versus other, so be it. I, I may like, I mean, I love Gina Peterson. That's perfectly fine, but that does, uh, reduce my love for his view of going out and hanging out with him. They are not, uh, lawless citizens, right? They are lawful, law-abiding, uh, group of people. They meet and share their views.
Uh, Dr. Gupta, I would, I would certainly tend to agree with the thoughts that you're saying in theory. But I, I have to go to the deeper realities of practice. Uh, first of all, I think that we have about eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars that are available to the school board for travel and mileage. And, uh, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars available to the school board for hotels, meals, and registrations. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Those are the beginning balance of the year. That's the beginning balance.
The beginning, that's.
That last column is your balance that you have now.
That's right. So the, the first thing I want to establish is those are the monies that we have. And the way this process works, according to how the board has operated up to this point, is that the chair of the board will determine whether or not a request to attend whatever is approved. And, uh, sometimes, um, we've had to make decisions. We are no longer members of NSBA, but for example, when we were, our budget didn't allow us to send everybody. So we would have to decide who we would send. And that appropriation would be a certain amount, and then all through the year, you have webinars and opportunities. And so that money has gone down already to one thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and fifty cent from an eighteen thousand budget, and, uh, down to fifty-six fifteen on the other. We do not have a lot of money to do these kind of things with a non-member school board. I will simply suggest this to us. The Lynchburg City Schools is a division that is made up of a, a broad perspective of individuals, of every demographic group, operating under the notion of local control. So then therefore, we have to think about what we're doing, what kind of optic it is when we are suggesting that whatever we are going to participate in isn't going to be favorable to all. Uh, one of the reasons why V S B A voted to remove its membership from NSBA was because of an issue around parents' engagement. V S B A is no longer a part of that group. I want to remind us that up to this point, Lynchburg City School Board, along with one hundred and thirty-two other school divisions, are members of V S B A, which is our policy group. And we are a part of that group because all nine members vote and decided to be a part of that group. So it is not made up of individuals. It's made up of our school board. Alongside of the code, we look for V S B A for training and other opportunities that we receive. V S B A is nonpartisan, and it has a component to it that embraces everyone. Now, I will say this on this matter. When I see language like foster networking among like-minded individuals, and when I see language that rep- uh, uh, need a new voice, not of those entrenched in unions that dominate the existing organizations. What if I decide, Dr. Senor, and I'm not trying to associate this request, Dr. Day, because I know your heart with that. But what if I decide that I've received some literature from the Ku Klux Klan? They have a newly organized educational component. And I want to bring to the Lynchburg City School Board, membership for that organization that only takes members. And you're going to suggest to me that they're people, they have rights, they're like-minded people, and we're going to take public dollars to support them? I think not. We have always been a board where the board joins something that every board member can participate in. This is a very different twist. It's individuals. Does the group line up with all of our students? What backlash are we going to get? Does it beat our comprehensive strategic goals? What is important to us? And I would dare to say that at this time, this will create more problems for us than it would be solutions to the problems that we have. I will not speak on this matter anymore. I'm not in favor of it for the reasons that I just stated. Individuals can be a part of whatever they want to pay. And I'd be delighted to pay my own two hundred and fifty dollars to be a part of the Ku Klux Klan organization on special education needs that I think may be of interest to me and not require the board to do that. I'm finished.
I don't think they're going to accept your membership.
Might get denied. Other board members.
Dr. Coleman, man.
Well, I don't, I don't think there's an equivalency between this group and the Klan, obviously. But I did see some wording here that raised red flags for me. So it's not something I would want to join. You know, entrenched unions, we've only had collective bargaining for what, one year? If that, so, I mean, it, it, yeah. So.
Those who haven't spoken, please, please.
So I, I tend to be not in favor of, well, I support your discretion on this one. Let me put it that way.
Those who haven't spoken, who wouldn't, uh, of course, Dr. Brendan is not here, but I thought this to be the only fair way to do it because I didn't want to have bias. I don't like bias, Dr. Edwards. We teach about avoiding that. I've given the best response I could to it. And it, uh, so at this point, it doesn't appear that there's any support for the board at this time. This matter can be revisited in the future. But at this particular time, it doesn't appear that there's support for.
I mean, I don't agree with the way it was handled, quite frankly. I don't think this is the proper form to bring that up, um, but.
That's just what I'm saying. I'm not worried about two hundred and fifty bucks. I don't think, Tina, I have ever submitted a, uh, expense account for anything. So the money, I mean, I have, I don't think, I've not ever asked for opinion or anything. I'd, obviously, I don't take whatever the stipend is you get for being on the board. The money is not an issue. Um, so I'm, I don't necessarily with that. I certainly support Dr. Day's decision to be in any organization he wants to be in. Uh, uh, I, I consider myself, uh, you know, I, I just, I wish we had talked about this in a, in a different forum, quite frankly.
I agree with you. I, I don't use stipend.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Never asked for reimbursement of miles. Only thing is that one time I didn't show up, this, I'm still asking for the check, but they, whatever the V S B A group mass training is, we do, but I don't know where that money is going. I like to see it in usual member, how much money has been spent on each member out of that eighteen, twenty thousand dollar budget. But it doesn't make sense to deny a school board member a membership he wants just because I disagree with their point of view. Everybody has a point of view, maybe different than mine. That doesn't mean they'll be drinking tea at my home.
Right. And that, and that's kind of, so the mon- if, if the reason, if true reason is because we're worried about budget, I mean, I'll pay out of my pocket. I'm not worried about the money, and then I'll expense it, something that I, uh, had to expense to get reimbursed. So I don't think the money is a valid excuse. So, and I, I support people's right to do what they want, not that I necessarily agree with it. But if there's, if there's, and I think your reasoning, I understand that better than, than money.
Well, to me, it's not about the.
It's not about the money. So don't say it's about the money.
We do things as a board.
Yeah.
Singularly. I'm not disputing anybody's right to join any organization they want. I'm a unitarian. That's offensive to some people. I mean, but that's what I do. That's my choice. That's my freedom. And y'all can do what you want. But as a board, I feel like we're either all in or we're not in. That's where I'm coming from.
And I, I can appreciate that perspective better than mine.
So from the funding perspective and as a board, but, I don't know, you want to join a teachers' union, fine. I mean, that's up to you. So, that, that. And, and I don't understand the need for a competition to V S B A, an alternative. I mean, they don't make the case there. So.
Well, I think it's very important to, I'm sorry, Dr. Day. I think it's very important to get lots of different perspectives of anything. I mean, um, I'm always want to learn. I mean, from my perspective, you know, keep your friends close, your enemies closer. I want to know what's going on, how are these people thinking? How are they thinking? And you know what? I'm flexible. Maybe that, I didn't agree with somebody over here at one point, and I'm like, you know what? They have some very valid points. I want to be educated. I want to learn about other people's points and perspectives. And, uh, if you can make a good, strong case, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna side with you. I'll support you. So that's, and I, so I see, I don't have a, as big an issue with that. I agree with some of the language in there is, is, um, interesting. Um, but I, I fully support people to do, you know, whatever group they want to join. I'm just not, the money, I'm not that concerned about. I wouldn't, we have the money.
Yeah, and it's, it's not the amount, and personally, it's not cost prohibitive for any one person to take that on themselves. Again, it's, we join things as a group, as a unit, in terms of how our budget is spent.
Dr. Day?
So I want to assure all of you that every vote and petition or position I take here is one that I arrive at myself. I'm not the agent of V S B A. I'm not the agent of the S B M A. I, but it's valuable to me, on contentious issues especially, to hear arguments from both sides.
Absolutely.
Um, I have heard people make accusations that the V S B A is one-sided on some issues. Now, I did not come here tonight to, to repeat those accusations, but they have been made. They may be valid or not. I, I'm not trying to pass judgment on the V S B A. I just am saying that I value this organization becomes it on some issues, provides an alternate point of view, which I may or may not agree with. But I would like to hear both sides of an issue, particularly on contentious things, before I make up my mind and decide what my position is. That's why this organization is valuable to me, because I think it gives you, me a perspective on issues that I am not getting from the V S B A. And I value having perspectives, different perspectives. But I'm not asking anyone else to join. I'm not asking anyone to act, to endorse the positions here. I'm just asking if, isn't it fair, uh, for the board to support, uh, my membership in this organization as a source of perspective and ideas, just as we support our membership in V S B A as a source of perspective and ideas?
And that's, and I see it as a resource. It's another resource. I, I don't know if you'd agree with the, uh, their ideals or not, but it's a resource. I mean, that's, that's how I view it. Um, and if you, my position, if you want to invest your time and go into these meetings, and you maybe, maybe learn something, maybe you don't. I just don't think it's a big investment of two hundred and fifty dollars. Your time is certainly the bigger of the investment. Go ahead.
Dr. Gupta?
Individual membership, I think, is a better route because then I don't have to go as a herd, uh, unwillingly. Because I may disagree with their point of view. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So the route they have chosen, that you get individual membership, you don't have to come as a whole board, I think is a better choice, so that if somebody wants to go, let them go. I mean, we, 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 we cannot pick and choose things just because we don't like somebody.
What do we pay for V S B A?
I don't have the numbers right in front of me at this time on what, what we pay for our collective membership and correspondingly what it costs for each to attend, uh, a plethora of learning opportunities throughout the course of the year. But I will say this to the board. Uh, currently, we have a membership in V S B A as a board. And V S B A has membership in a national body now called COSBA. And they recently had their convention, of which none of us attended. So my point is going forward, there are dollars for that national type of organization. There is the potential of maybe nine members attending any function with V S B A, let alone anything else that the board decides it wants to be involved in. So I, I'm trying to share with you all from experience. Right now, it may appear to be a non-issue. But once everything is running full steam, past COVID, and this body wants to, many of us, regardless of what organization it may be, go to national conventions and other settings where the board send all nine, 11, seven, or whatever amount of people. And our reason in Lynchburg has always been, we can't afford to send everybody to those larger groups. And we haven't. Am I correct, Dr. Carter? So we had to prioritize based on things like seniors. So what I'm saying is, once you get out there in the traffic, and then please understand whatever things that individuals get involved in, no disrespect to Dr. Day, because I've shared to him, I understand being an individual and doing whatever. But each of these groups are going to call for additional learning opportunities, additional expenses, additional things that any group is going to say is legitimized for expenditure. If you've got nine people involved in all different kinds of things, each of those groups require them to go to other events where you're asking for hotels and mileage. And you can't say you aren't, because if that be the case, you wouldn't ask for membership. So at some point, those of us who are so frugal with our money, I'm somewhat surprised to hear that we think we got all this money for this, because we don't.
So we got about $18,000 in total budget? How much we got?
According to what I have, we only have $1,000 left in there.
No, not left. What was the beginning of the balance in that account?
Eighteen.
Eighteen thousand. You got nine members. So right now, the model that we use is it's a lump sum money, anybody can grab it. To me, why don't we allocate $2,000 to each member and let them spend wherever they want to?
That's right.
You know? Instead of saying, he spent 6,000, I spent only 200. You see what I'm saying? That doesn't make sense.
I can't, I can't speak against your motion, Doc, or your suggestion.
I'm not making a motion.
I can't speak against it because I'm just saying, it doesn't appear to me to be very practical, because you can't send somebody to something and expect them to go and then tell them they're going to have to pay out-of-pocket expense.
You can tell him that he has to pay out of pocket.
Dr. Carter?
According to the agenda, I know it's for discussions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just...
So we, we're not voting, too, right?
Technically not, but Dr. Day needs a resolve to the matter. And I'm saying to you, if I'm the resolved, the answer is no.
Fair enough.
It can come back, it can come, it can come back at some later point, that'd be fine.
I, I think, I mean, I don't...
I don't know what else to say about it.
Okay, so let's, let's move away.
All right. Okay. I always like to end the meeting on a good note, so I was trying to see if everybody would share their thoughts, and I think, yeah. Okay. We now will move to the last part of this meeting, which is the informational section. And let's see here. Can't get my computer right here. So I have to get to my little pages to give me a moment here to find it. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Carter.
I have mine up if you need it.
All right. So the next school board meeting is Tuesday, May the 2nd. And the facilities committee meeting is going to be May the 9th. And then on the 16th, we're going to have our next school board work session. You're going to get from Tina Day something that will kind of help us to frame out when this deliberative board retreat is going to be around the strategic plan to do what we said we want to do tonight. You'll get that. And I think that's about it, Dr.?
Can I just mention something for the calendar?
Please.
This week, Heritage High School in collaboration with Glass, a production of The Prom.
Thank you for, thank you for mine.
Yeah, it came to my attention for Cabaret that our students in theater have noticed that school board members haven't been coming to their productions. So, and this one is especially important because of the subject matter. A lot of their sponsors pulled out. So it'd be really nice to have every show just sold out.
What date and time?
So...
And where, where are they?
It's at Heritage Theater, but Glass students are in it. So it's April 21st, 22nd, 27th, and 28th. That's seven. And then April 23rd, which I think is a Sunday, is a 3:00 PM. Matinee.
What's the subject matter which made?
The prom. It's a really sweet story about a girl, a student who wants to take her girlfriend to the prom, and her mother objects. And it's sort of this coming to terms with queer romance. There's nothing explicit about it, it's just a same-sex relationship. So...
Sounds like the KKK to me. I mean, it... You're talking about the same stuff?
Also, it'd be nice to support it because Kalen Snyder, who is the representative from Heritage, is part of the, she has a role in this program. And so I think it would be...
It'd be fun.
It would be really nice to, to support them. So that's just my pitch.
You said the 21st?
Yeah. You could, you can go to pioneertheater.com, I think, and find it, but it's the 20, yeah, this Friday and Saturday, and then next week, Friday and Saturday. And then I guess April 23rd is the Sunday. Let me see my calendar. Yeah, Sunday, the 23rd, in the afternoon, 3:00 PM.
Go, go right ahead, Dr. Day.
Different question regarding upcoming schedule items. The next work session is the May 16th, and then on the agenda after that, it says April... Oh, that's just today, April 18th. Okay. Never mind.
No problem, Dr. Day. Dr. Sena, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anybody else have anything else pertinent to say regarding things that are upcoming? If not, please pat yourselves on the back. You're the greatest board ever. You do all these things. This board retreat.